Yeah, it's in two places now, so I was just gonna do it in here. And then when we got to the end, just say, oh, we already covered this.
Yes, another question.
Good evening, welcome to the Rose Tree Media Board of School Directors Work Session. My name is Teresa Natton-Williams, I'm the Vice President, Susan Henderson did this, it's not even be here tonight. So let us get started, starting with finance and operations.
The first item we have on the agenda is the change order and also the capital projects status update, which will be given by Mr. Ron Benjamin.
The change order is on the mechanical project at Petcrest High School for the Delly Brothers, and that's for deteriorated exterior ductwork. On the capital projects, for the awarded contracts on March 24th, we're in shops in Subdills in Penncrest Mechanical, Indian Lane Mechanical, interior renovations in Indian Lane in Penncrest, and the Masonary renovation projects at Indian Lane and Rose Tree. The roofing projects at Indian Lane and Rose Tree, we had a pre-bid, it's March 23rd, and should have a cost proposal in early April. Indian Lane Elementary is going forward with the June start. That's the parking lot. Glenwood Parking Edition is, is on hold right now. The Penncrest HVAC projects from last summer, all the ventilators are in, the edge center elevator is complete. The rooftop units, and the music suite, library, Alstom, and print shop have been completed. There are two more units being delivered next week, we have a crane gonna be picking them up, and we'll be done those, we only have three left. We do not have dates confirmed for when they're gonna be delivered. Media Elementary Lobby Skylight is moving forward with the roof repairs on the parapet. And media window shade replacement is gonna start Monday and be completed by Thursday.
Are there any questions on the operations item? Thank you for getting the window shades and media done before.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is we have a brief update on the budget since the budget presentation that was held last month. Just to quickly go over the calendar, so the proposed final budget would need to be adopted at the April 28th legislative meeting, and we would certify then that we were using the PDE format of the PDE 2028. Then we would move forward, May 6th, the, we would have the proposed final budget available for public inspection. May 16th, we would give notice of the intent to adopt the final budget, and then hopefully board adoption of the final, or the May 26th legislative meeting. The key points of the changes since last month, we've updated local revenue based on some current revenues, elections. We've updated the state subsidy for social security and Peasars based on some of the changes in salaries and benefits. And expenditures, we did have four retirements, so those changes are also in and substituted with hiring other, like newer employees, and those benefits still haven't been increasing the retirement rate from the 34.94% to 35.26%. This budget does maintain the current programs, and we've updated the medical prescription delta and, excuse me, dental and vision expenses. So if you recall, on the March 15th, we had proposed revenue of $107,505,525. Since then, we have additional social security and Peasars from the state subsidy, which we get 50% back. Local real estate making an adjustment, currently adjustment of decreasing that revenue by $400,000. The county has been understaffed and swamped, and we're actually getting collections, there's a lag in the collections. So right now, we're adjusting it, we're gonna keep looking at it before we get to the May budget, and if things start picking up, then we can readjust that. But right now, we had no other choice but just to decrease it.
Vanessa, just to see the projection for all of the new properties that are gonna be bought and sold during the year, or is this just what's existing right now?
So it's what's existing, what we, we get a number from the county in November for the assessments, and that's what we budget on. And for the other, like the transfer tax and all that, we're basically going on a historical trend, so we're a little lower now based on the county. So the use of fund balance to balance the expenses is the $4,509,872. This number is at a two-point, excuse me, the impact increase of 3.4. So at the March meeting, our expenditures were $111,136,763. We did have additional salary and benefit charges after those retirements and putting in estimated benefits. And we had some changes in department budgets, which was a decrease, so the expenditures are now the $111,074,067. Any questions on that before I do? So this slide, we're showing the difference in the revenue between the 3.2% increase that we had talked about in March, and the 3.4% in the local, and as you see, it's a difference of $159,475. So part of the discussion tonight would be the board making a decision on which increase we will be reflecting on the April legislative meeting for the... But this chart shows the breakdown between local, state, and federal revenue. And as you can see, this is also built off of the 3.4%, so there's minimal change from the 3.2 to the 3.4. We didn't wanna crowd the slide, we'll put it up to almost identical charts, so it's all, it changes like a smaller. This page is the PDE 2028, the format of revenue. So these numbers and this column are all at the 3.4%, and we added the amount of current real estate taxes if we were to do a 3.2% increase, and to show the difference. So this side is your local sources, which is the majority, as the last slide shows. And our revenue from the state sources, and revenue from federal sources, that would come up to that total. This slide is showing the breakdown of the expenditures in comparison to the 2022, our current year's budget. So as you will see, salaries and benefits make up the majority of the budget. The salaries are an increase of the 5.47%, which again is contractual increases. The benefits are also the contractual, and also the state retirement rate increases.
And also just one question, the contractual obligations for the salary increases, that's not every teacher or person gets a 5.47%, that includes people who have earned additional educational levels, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
That also includes the staff.
Thank you. But then again, these, this page shows the instructional support services breaking it down by the function using the PDE format, which we're required to do at for the proposed final. On this slide, we're showing the federal changes on several, on several, the assessments, the one in the middle, we calculated that on the median to show the increase for that tax bill year at the 3.2 and the 3.4. We also picked a, like a higher assessed value of $538,508, and a lower assessed value of $258, to illustrate the increases at each of 3.2 and the 3.4%. So our next steps in the process is we'll continue to talk to the county and get more information on the assessment information. We're gonna continue to review all the expenditures and the revenues, hopefully try and update federal programs, but normally those numbers do not come out until June or July after we've already adopted. We will also look at the state revenue numbers, currently they are proposed numbers, they're not final numbers. We will be looking to adopt the proposed final budget at the April 28th meeting, and adopt the final budget at the May 26th legislative meeting. Are there any questions?
Basically, today, we need for us to say whether 3.2 or 3.4, correct?
Said the changes as of last meeting, and for staff that said bypass, did you walk through what those changes were since that you could step on me?
Mr. Hallberg can go through, I believe it was when someone retires and we put in that we were hired for a new teacher. We don't know what the benefits are gonna have, so then we're estimating what it's gonna have.
I do, because we have placed in our contract, teachers shouldn't let us know by March 15th that they're gonna retire, that allows us, oh sure, pull this closer again. Because we put in our contract that teachers need to provide us their retirement order by March 14th. That allows Dr. Scott and I to take advantage of the traditional savings. So with the four retirements that we received in March, I was able to go back into the budget, pull their high salaries and benefit costs out, and replace them with lower new hires, and we were able to take advantage, this year there's only four, so we're taking advantage of about $218,000 worth of traditional savings. And it might be more as we progress into hiring season, hiring people who are less expensive than what we estimated in the budget. But right now, we've saved about $218,000 from what we had in March to now what we have in April 7th.
But there wasn't anything added by council or any positions?
Nothing new, what we talked about on March 15th.
In the order of shifts?
I'd be forced to relate by different tax base. From 70,000 to 73,000, in the tax base, the year 2028, we're trying to keep our livelihood in the tax base, when controlled all these developments are now on. Or is that obviously...
The majority of the $700,000 was for, there was a large tax appeal, or, I think it was the Atone Brothers, there was multiple decreases in the assessment, and also just other assessment appeals that have happened since the reassessment of last year. That's what amounted to the $700,000 decrease.
And neither of us have seen that offset by all the...
So at this point, we're still getting information, one, the, the townships that have the recent occupancy, and they gave to the county, but the county has been slow in a lag in giving that information over to the districts. And it's not just our district, it's all the other districts in the county as well.
One of those, one of those assessment appeals was a lot of land that was incorrectly entered, and the system was made far larger than it actually was.
Alright, so I think we need a decision. 3.4. Yes. Sorry, one second, does anybody on the board wanna, wanna wait? Okay, go ahead, please.
So at the March meeting, we discussed, so the 3.4% is the Act One index, that's the maximum increase that the district is allowed to give, given from the state. At the March meeting, we gave scenarios of a 3.0% increase, a 3.2, and a 3.4. And at that point, the board said that it was not interested in seeing a 3.0 at this meeting, so we just presented the 3.2 and the 3.4 per the request from the board.
Just to follow along with our question, so is your decision on 3.2 or 3.4 based on just whether or not you want more money, or do you need more money?
Just touch once.
When we start the budget, when we start the budget, we actually start with a much larger number, that's kind of the wish list, and then we have to carve down. We have to carve down because of revenue from all of our sources, including state and federal revenue, isn't enough to meet budgetary requirements. Some of those budgetary requirements are contractual, in labor agreements. We know we're controlled costs, we have to meet those costs. Some of those costs are from the retirement system, we're required to pay into that retirement system a certain percentage. So there's very, very little discretionary cost in school budget. And we actually have a bracket of that somewhere. So when we have, when we look at discretionary budget, then we start looking at prioritizing what we need. So if you, the budget presentation was out last month, the discretionary for the budget supports certain parts of the program, and that's in that budget presentation from last month. But really, the, the stress of school budgets is that they rest on property owners. That's how Pennsylvania structures school funding. And so we'll, we'll hear a lot about the inadequacy of that, it's been discussed for many, many years. The state has formed at least now two commissions to try to figure out a way to resolve this issue of funding schools, and in particular, using just property tax. So for example, they looked at a model of earned income tax, as soon as you leave the model of earned income tax, who would think that's unhappy? By income owners, so it's really, it's a very complicated system for the state to kind of determine other than its restless. And of course, if you look at the fed, federal contribution to public education, look at that number. And that's, you know, that, that's an issue in the United States, that's an issue in our country. So it's very difficult today to fund budgets, where all of our districts are holding short budgets, unless you live with a lot of commercial properties, where there's a strong enough commercial tax base that it takes away some of that onus onto individual property owners. The reassessment of the county, that shifted some of that commercial burden onto individual property owners. Districts don't have many people over that, that's where the reassessment comes back.
Alright, I didn't know if your question was answered.
No, there wasn't.
Okay, can we ask again, not to keep that sidetracked?
It looks as though you can meet your budgetary requirements with a 3.2%, so why don't you go for that?
If you look, the use, so if you look at the total revenues and the, and the use of fund balance, so the fund balance is likely favored. You have a certain amount of money in the fund balance, you have to actually keep a certain amount of money in the fund balance if you wanna have the strong enough financial credit rating. So, and that's, there's also a parameter, which you're not really gonna be exceeding that, you just can't keep adding to your fund balance, unless of course there's a cybercharge to a hundred million dollars. So when we look at meeting a budgetary number, we're kind of shading off what's the wish list that we just aren't gonna be able to fund, and how much of the fund balance do we need to use in order to meet that, that budgetary expenditure? So if you see, the difference between the 3.2 and 3.4 is a difference of fund, using a fund balance of $159,000. It's not a huge difference, it doesn't change your overall financial credit rating, but you're still projecting to use 4.6 of your fund balance. Now, the other thing that makes that a little more complicated, each year we project the use of our fund balance, we don't always use that, because since these school budgets, you have to budget for the worst-case scenario. So you have to budget, for example, as if every employee is going to use all of their benefits at the maximum amount. Well, that typically doesn't happen in any school year, so at the end, when that budget gets reconciled at the end of the year, sometimes you're not using any of your fund balance, but the way school budgets are developed, you have to, you have to have a budget that is able to meet the worst-case scenario.
Yes, sir.
So, just in comparison, 3.2% is the maximum increase per law?
By the Act One index.
Okay. And for the year 2021, same way, recall exactly what that increase was?
It was about, was it 3.2?
It was 2.6, because we were limited to the previous years.
Right, but that was not the Act One index, so last year's reassess, because we had a year of reassessment, we could not use the Act One index. You had to use the previous year's reassessment.
So there, there was a fudge factor then, because the reassessment gave you extra money?
No, it gave us less.
Gave you less money?
Yes.
But more money per resident? Or might per residential property?
No.
There was an increase in residential properties, decrease in commercial properties assessment.
But that has to be revenue neutral to us. Revenue neutral overall is saying more to the residential.
They should have done it by... Yeah.
That's the county.
So we got bumped.
So there's a whole lot of things, I mean, this board, I think, is on your side about wishing we could do things differently, and wishing we did half the lot of things increases. We're on the same side as you, but as Eleanor eloquently said, is it 8% of our budget is to shockfully obligated? And it's not just salaries and benefits, it's also special education services that are mandated by the state, and the government is less than 1%, the federal government is less than 1% of our budget, and the state is less than 20% of our budget. They don't contribute as much as they're supposed to contribute to some things, and Pennsylvania ranks 7th in the nation for school funding. So we are really happy to see all the new faces here, because we need your help in writing to all of our state legislators to get better funding for the students of Pennsylvania, so that not as much of it resides on all of the taxpayers. We're, and about 10 years ago, in the recession of '08, '09, when the Peasars deficit hit and the school districts had to make it, people cut a lot in this district. When you look at our administrative staff compared to the administrative staff at other districts, you will find that we are extremely lean. And Eleanor is an extremely good pencil sharpener and budget cutter. There have been things even that the board has asked for, that she says, we just can't afford it. So in terms of sharpening pencils, it's not that we enjoy saying, yes, let's take the maximum increase that corresponds with inflation, it's that we don't feel like we have a lot of options in the state of Pennsylvania right now. And if you add on top one more thing, and then I'll stop talking, and that is the cyber charter schools that cost, what, what's the number, $20,000 per student? $20,000, it's more than that now, $22,000 per student. So every student in our district that signs up for a cyber charter school, we have to go and pay that school $20,000 for students, and that is a lot more than it costs to educate them right here in the district, but we do not have a choice, we have to pay the money. Special rates, $46,000.
Okay, we have a question over here.
I do, and first of all, I wanna say, my kids live in Warner Valley, and I've sat, as I've been all day at one... I do, and first of all, I want to say, my kids went to Warner Valley and I've sat, as I've been all day at one social media with someone. I sat in these budget meetings for twenty years with my kids. And I just want to applaud first rate because you guys do have a privilege that. You don't, I mean, Warner Valley, we had five principals at one point. Why? I went to Catholic school, one none, who's a disciplinarian. Kick your butt. Why did you need five principals?
There are multiple.
Multiple. Every grade had a principal. Why? I went to friend me, we had one principal. So when I hear everybody kind of grumbling a little bit, I think y'all need, like I said before the last meeting, let's take a pause and look at the numbers realistically. Because these numbers, when you compare them to other school districts, there's not a lot of gravy for the machinist in this, there really truly isn't. However, my question is, and you know, there always is a however relationship. Why don't you break this down by schools? Like you say, you have services, this is the whole district. So what does media need? What does pen press need? What does spring to me? What does, I'm a director, I know exactly what my budget is, my lighting, my sound, my costumes. I have to go to my school board and say, I need eighteen thousand dollars to put your show on, to make you twenty nine or thirty that. I don't see any of that, and that's my concern. You have three million dollars in supplies, what are the supplies? Are they breakfast, lunch for the kids? Is it transportation? Is it gas? Is it costumes? Like, I would love to see in future because I am long term here, I am hoping to go out and gasket in my property. Where if my kids have their life, we'll have a bonfire. But anyway, I want to know, because I am, like I said before, if we need it. Hell, I'll come to school cafeteria in the United States and I'll make sure they're real, not on the box. But if we don't need it, then let's trim it and let's do an itemized, I know, sorry, we pause a little, couple more hours of paperwork. When you come, you got all these people now interested. You're talking about presenting a budget, I have no idea what kind of press falls, nothing. How much is foreign, how much is foreign language? Teachers, like you spoke, teachers that are going out at a hundred eighty K a year. The pyramid, the college kids coming in are not a hundred eighty K a year. They're all the way down, so there is, there's the gravy, the pressure, you are mixing up the salaries. You are hiring less and letting mature retire out. So I totally get how frustrated it is. And I, I have the experience of twenty years sitting and listening, like I said to my kids. This is the subniss school board meeting of the year, they talks about the budget. And no one in the district publicly asks, how much does it cost to educate the child? How much does it cost for cyber school fees? How much does it cost for the special needs bits? How much does it cost for the kid that we can't teach because they're severely dyslexic? And we have the ship of an hour and a half wait to select the school at thirty thousand dollars a year because that's the fault. Before, we have plenty of crap to beat y'all up. But I do want to say, what you're doing with your budget is so commendable. Because there's not a lot of commercial property in middle town township. It's growing, but it's not here yet. GV had a flood there. And basically we found thirteen million dollars in a flood. So I applaud you, but my suggestion and my request is, can you kind of chop it up a little bit easier for us? So we can see what schools need, or don't need, or what the outgoing teacher salaries are and what incoming is. You plunder and overload us with documents, we'll read them and we'll do a lot of that, we can't, I mean.
It's just, and I thank you for your comments. I think part of the, part of the rub, I think, is that school budgets are, there's a format of school budgets and items are quoted to PBD codes of function.
We don't own that.
I know that, I know that. So when you look, for example, there are functions for the cost of special education. Now each year we have to, we have to predict those costs. We typically have, we know this cost of the children front in the district, but we have to also budget for children who may move into the district. Who may be children of significant age, who are going to need significant services, but it costs it. So each year we do a budget, we kind of try to estimate that.
Again, you don't show it to us, so.
But that number isn't a special ed budget.
Okay, we also discussed, so this is sort of a second meeting after last month's meeting, which was the full budget meeting. So this is not the full information. If you go back to last month, you can watch the video and get the documents on our website. That was the full presentation of the budget.
But that also didn't show me line by line school.
Because, well, right, because.
You go to Warner Valley, it's line by line. I know exactly in high school, they get eighteen thousand dollars for their dinner program up until twenty fourteen. When it became private industry and the school district no longer catered to the performing arts center. It became a club, a non-school club. So that eighteen thousand were to go with GB. But we saw that our lunches got higher. We started feeding, not only did we feed our own kids, we were feeding kids that were coming in for transport. Nobody could have moved it because here it all is, this is all the money. And it, it doesn't take a lot of scientists to sit there and calculate it. This doesn't show me what pen press needs out of, out of media. Like, are you feeding the kids breakfast? Are you feeding them lunch?
Yeah, that's, that's not in the supply budget, so there's different.
No, but I'm saying, is it in the overall budget? Is it in the cafeteria budget? How many, how many employees per cafeteria do you have? How many lunches do you feed at the place? We don't know. So we want to tell you and say, oh my God, that makes sense, we're feeding four hundred of media, two twenty five. You sent me an email, you had the numbers, everything, all the numbers I wanted. That's what we have to give everyone. But I said it before, Warner Valley, we built two schools. We have the potential of two teachers' grounds. We, we have everything grocery media never had in the same venue. Because Warner Valley, the school district, basically had diarrhea of the mouth and gave everybody everything they needed. So there was like, well, this is what it is, babe, this is how much you're costing. This is where students, eight, nine, four, his piece wasn't six sixty two thousand, he was a band board. The law is the law, it's the law, we cannot argue that. We cannot argue that that job needs band board.
All right, thank, thank you, and we have some others if you want to comment. Yes, go ahead. Okay, so there's, there's something called a capital budget. That capital budget is for capital expenditures that go into a new school, including land acquisition. Most capital budgets are funded through bond borrowing. You sell bonds and you borrow a scoop of money to fund these large capital projects. The reason the new school is needed is there is no more room. The children continue to come, they continue to build, these townships continue to build developments, housing developments. Those children need to be educated. There is no room to educate those kids. Lemberd is completely maxed out, Rose Creek already has two modular units. There is no room for the children coming to school. And so you have to build a new school, you cannot accommodate, absorb three hundred fifty kids anywhere. You cannot, we looked at that two years ago and you cannot, you cannot add on to media, it is not. You cannot add on to Rose Creek, it's in the middle of the neighborhood and you can't, you'd have to raise two neighborhoods in order to get all the parking and traffic onsite, so you can't develop a new school. Indian Lane has slip issues, Springton Lane has Media Little League and it has all of our athletic fields for middle school. So we looked at all of those options way back two years ago, that's how they got to new land for a new school. And again?
For a cheaper price, now you want a piece of land, you can totally focus sports. Right, people need some speed as far as the line, split the floor, just like the B Y City. Planet Parking, for all sports, make a campus.
Some of that, some of those.
And save millions.
Okay, but some of those issues are where these health and health are happening. So we are, we have children on buses for fifteen minutes right now.
Do you still have them?
No, we don't. All right, I appreciate the comment. We really need to focus on the budget.
We work though.
We discussed this about the school report.
You need, we truly do. But then, I'm a Catholic, that's good, it is, and let me tell you that. And it wasn't that hard to put a desk in for when the Polish kids came over because my church sponsored them. You're telling me you need a brand new school, you're maxed out. And I said, there's a hundred and seventy eight kids. You're gonna go walking?
We do appreciate it, but are there any other questions about the budget that's before us?
I have a question, I have to challenge you on enrollment data. Your own data, your own data shows that because you don't get past the two years of your school. Don't use weather, because they have some, not much. I looked at the data for twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, from, from the school itself. It doesn't show three hundred fifty new elements, it's just showing it all. And these productive for COVID.
We're not going to debate how many students in the numbers, is there other questions about the budget? We have already talked about this, we have already talked about this, we're talking about finance and operation, we're not going to debate the number of students.
There was a COVID nineteen pandemic.
Right.
There were lockdowns. There was masks, every parent thought, what can I do to tie, can I get it home? We're going to get them into education. Some of them went to brokered school, some of them did homeschool. You didn't factor that in twenty twenty, I think you need to think about it.
Thank you for your comment, is there something else about the budget?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the budget with funding all the teachers. There's radical teacher shortage, what Philadelphia is doing, as you saw, is increasing sign bonuses and giving them higher salaries. How's that going to affect our budget here in, in grocery media? And we, we have a hard time getting teachers, we talked about it in a couple of meetings ago, and substitute teachers. What are we going to do to get teachers to step in our school, what's that for cost? I mean, and, and there's a shortage all over the country, it's not just here.
You have to, you have to teach the children no matter where they are.
No, 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 no.
You need to solve the teacher.
You just teach them.
Yeah, you have to solve.
No, and I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying, we're concerned about, you know, I know Dean, we talked with Dean about this. And we were looking at the Montgomery demographics in their report in twenty twenty five. And the report showed that if they added one child per classroom, that they would take over the overflow of the number of students that we, we say we need rooms for. And if we have to do that versus building a new school. That doesn't work, that's not right, okay, well, you're saying it's not.
One child, I, I, yeah, that's not how enrollment works. You don't just look at a number and say, you add one child per classroom, that solves the problem, that's not how enrollment works.
How do you work with getting a new school?
Because when you project the enrollment, which is a combination of live births, neighborhood turnover and new housing development, that's what demographics do. There's a whole software that does that and it says, the kids are coming. Now, how do we know that? Go on the website, we have been over our projections, our demographic projections, every single year. This year we started, we.
I'll look at it.
Okay, well, if you want to come in and meet with me, I will go over those numbers with you, because you're not reading something correctly. So just come in and meet with me and I'll go over the enrollment report right here. All right, are there some other questions about the budget? Just send me an email, I'll have a meeting with you soon. Hopefully.
I have another one. So how many people don't take a million more in debt? How many people don't debt service payment only? In here, when inflation rates are rising and you go already talked about, you can't easily get more money. Your boss will, why don't you take one more debt? And which more debt?
So, I mean, it takes five years to make a school. I'm curious, we actually, I'm sure it's, it's hot question. Where should, where should a hundred fifty crib new kids go? All schools are already crowded, what's, what's the answer? We have to signal, prepare. This, this group here, for this, and for that, so lots of public, you know, citywide. And decide, we need a new school, we need to, possible alternative, upgrade, wire, space on the land, space in the buildings, new development's being built. It's been looked at, gateways someday, because we have to, maybe the race is just starting.
They're not building housing developments.
Well, you, you told where the children are.
That's what we're hearing.
Edge line in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one census, you have to be. Yes, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I went to inventory, not on every tour, every single one, when I said, hi, my name is Lisa. And I'm just going to ask you, I'm traditionally back at school, I'm doing my own research. Second one, home. Two, where do they go? Very negative, this, that, I said, how many kids are going to be, I hope the whole development of all of them. That tree is fifty six percent, fifty five plus apartment, and, 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 or pure jack. Those kids are coming there. I, that place, Michael and I, well, every house. Because if you tell me, Lisa, I'm perfectly me. To build other schools because we needed it, we needed that home, you know, right? We couldn't wait five years to let go. Because Springfield, we bring, it's literally falling down around the children. So I was the one with, everyone, and I said to the parents, stand behind me, because guess what, they need this friggin' school. If we truly, truly need this school, then let's do it right. The fact that you're going to class by two pipelines is insane to me, insane. I went to the barracks and I said to the state police, God forbid they build this school. And there is a blast or a leak on the old line at twelve o'clock in the afternoon. And you get the call, what is the response time? And the captain said to me, the response time will have to probably be over thirty minutes. We monitor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to, we have to get back to the, we have to get back to the budget, okay, and there's someone who has a question.
You've built a school with no access? How the hell are you going to get emergency to those children? Absolutely, a thousand percent is the location.
Now, we have a question up front about the budget, please.
You're going to spend sixteen million dollars.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry, we're moving on to someone else, go ahead, please.
So, I'm looking, you have total revenues of a hundred and sixty million dollars, a little bit more, well, a hundred and seven. That's, that's not breaking these five schools, six schools, four elementary, middle school and a senior. You want to add another property, is that another fifteen, twenty percent in revenues you got to generate? Another twenty million dollars that you're going to have to put on top of that? And then where do you get twenty million dollars for, you know, out of the rate bears? There's not that much development, development to get twenty million, you'll have a mass accidents. You know, you, you won't be able to fund these schools.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't really work that way, it's not, so in that.
It's going to cost one, it's going to cost. You're going to have to plow the snow, you want that bus.
It's gonna cost one, it's gonna, you're gonna have to cut the grass, you're gonna have to plow the snow, you want that bus, you wanna have the operations cost, bus drivers, you're gonna have three times the bus drivers going into Edgemine versus what's going out of Edgemine, because you're moving three hundred kids in as opposed to a hundred kids out.
They're already on buses, right.
You're right, but, but the difference is, you're talking about the congestion, and, and because these kids have to ride a bus for forty five minutes, it's still gonna be forty five minutes, it's probably even gonna be greater, sure it is.
As someone who lived in that one for eight years, like, like Dayton, but at Delaware Elementary, it's gonna be a more shorter bus ride, bus ride, and people live in the northern regions of the district.
That's not the population, the population, so I won't. I have, and I've looked at the population.
Every single student has to cross Route One to get to an elementary school. Two fifty two, three fifty two, or four fifty two, if you've ever tried doing that at Rush Hour, it's awful. Part of it is getting worse, there is nothing, there's no school up there.
Come, come stand on three fifty two where my property is, and, and I'll show you Rush Hour.
Okay, well, let's, let's start to wrap this up.
But it is what I'm, again, I'm, I'm more concerned budget wise that you're looking fifteen, twenty percent increase in revenues, and I'm wondering where that's coming from, even after you built the school, and then you got debt service without anyone. I mean, the third, it's another school, it's another hundred people operating in that school. That's salaries, that's real salaries.
But those salaries are gonna be there.
Hundred, hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per teacher.
The children are coming, their salaries are gonna be there.
They're not, they're not, they're not.
All right, now, um. I'm sorry, Jackie, do you have a, a comment, please?
So I just want to take us back to the budget and the three point two and the three point four. So, to me, the difference of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a lot of fund balance. I think, you know, it has been a difficult time for our community. To me, it's worth doing the three point two, sort of rolling the dice on how much fund balance we have to use, and, um, you know, not taking the max act one this year. I would also really love to see another counselor, um, or two brought into the district, I know. I know, but I heard this from your last, you know, legislative meeting, we've been hearing it, that, you know, mental health issues with our students, um, you know, it's a service that we can really use, so I'm conflicted, I want to do the three point two. I don't know how, I don't know what feels about.
Is there any?
I'm sorry.
Well, we can hear, or we can hear you guys.
If we do three point two, does that affect us at all for choice next year?
Doesn't affect us at all.
No, next year will be, excuse me, a different index.
Any other board member want to comment on three point two or three point four?
I would just say, I echo what Jackie said a hundred percent, I think you can hear a lot of them.
Uh, that is my opinion as well, um, I, I'm always concerned about that fund balance, but in this year, where a, a lot of families are hurting and are really, really stretched, even though it's a very small difference in what they're gonna pay actually in their taxes, emotionally, philosophically, I think it's an odd to respect that, to understand that, and to respect that.
Um, I, does anybody else on the board want a comment? Um, I'm good with the three point four.
Yeah, I think if you saw those seven dollars, ten dollars, and fifteen dollars per year for a household, I know we're really talking about that hundred and fifty nine being the difference in what we borrow from the fund balance, but I look at it like you guys do, we've been hearing from parent after parent, we've heard from RTM, E A, about the needs of students for mental health, and I'm as conflicted as you are, Jackie, if that, if that extra ten dollars that we're asking per year from our, our taxpayers would go to find another counselor to help our students, I might think differently.
Yeah, um, I'm, I kind of look at it the other way, in sort of the big picture way, that, uh, though I recognize that we all could use a little bit of a break in our taxes, seven to twenty dollars a year, uh, over making the point to the state that we need more revenue. I think if we take a three point two instead of a three point four, it looks like we're doing fine, and we don't need it, and I think we need it.
I, I just wonder if you have anything to add to the conversation. Vanessa, do you have an opinion about which of our two are fund balances, et cetera?
So each year, we do have the risk of using fund balance. And up until now, we had not, but like, um, Dr. Denver was explaining, each year we're budgeting for the worst case scenario in terms of benefits, in terms of salaries, and I believe that similar to Mr. Dennis, if we go to, uh, three point two, then we're saying, hey, we don't really need it, and then we're kind of there going forward.
Is the state, is the state seeing that? Do you think they're telling that?
Well, I know we have to turn everything that we do, and they run different reports on the stuff based on what districts do. But it is the board's decision.
Okay, any other board member? All right.
I have one question, um, there's never that I've seen a line item for, um, hi, like, does Wawa give donations every year to the board? Is there, is there anything in kind that the district gets that is either tax deductible or can be used to assist the gravy, like? I know that, but Wawa is in your district, Wawa's are in your district. So what I'm saying is, and Wawa's in Delaware County, does Wawa, or and any other company, give your school district any kind where it is a tax deduction? Or you can't go and solicit to them and say, look, our kids need milk, you know? You know, is there, who is the contracts with? Like, you're, again, you're telling me you need money, and I'll get us, I'll give you thirty dollars a year or more if you tell me truly what you need it for, you're whole milk versus skim? I know Wawa, I'll go up to the friends and say, look, give first three some coin or donations. You're not telling me what you need, you're just telling us a bunch of numbers. So that's so frustrating.
Thank you, go ahead.
I have a question about fund balance. Isn't it true that within the last ten years, the fund balance has not been used to, um, satisfy the budget? There seems to be a lot of concern about preserving fund balance when we haven't touched it. So, let's not be disingenuous. Let's not talk about, oh, we've gotta maintain our fund balance because we have to ensure a good bond rating, you haven't had to dip into the fund balance. Have you?
It was a year back, China, when was it? Seventeen, seventeen eighteen, maybe? Um, we had that on the prior, uh, the prior presentation where fund balance was used for some of the capital projects in the district back here. So there was a transfer to the capital projects, but for operational, you're correct, um, it has not been used in recent history.
Is that the only reserve balance that's just passed?
But, but it's also not like we had more revenue than expenditures in the years, and that's why the twenty, we see the twenty twenty one actuals there, because it shows that both the revenues and the expenditures end up being less. It's not like in the budget, we're using, you know, a higher revenue and less expenditures, and then we have a lot left over. We just managed to keep it out. It's not like we're dumping.
But the bottom line is, based on history, you haven't used the fund balance.
Right.
And there's a trap record here of not having to depend upon the fund balance. So let's say that we haven't had to dip into fund balance in order to meet our budgetary requirements, and why would this year be any different?
It's not.
It may or may not be, but you still have it, you still have it in the budget at even a lower tax rate.
Right, and so it's, it's not, but I'm also showing you that it's not like we put this in there, and then we have at the end of the year, four million dollars that goes into the, like, that we get as extra.
I know, that's not what I said.
I, I know it's not what you said, but I'm just clarifying that it's, you were saying the same thing the other way, and I'm just saying, it's not like we're getting four million dollars either, we're not using four million, and we're not getting four million.
It's a wash.
It's a wash.
Okay, I think there was a question in the back.
Is there any other?
Yeah, so, uh, so, um, you just said that the, somebody just said that the fund balance was in twenty seventeen or eighteen, or whatever, transferred to, onto some capital projects, so that tells me you can move money around. So you can use some money that you have for capital to pick up the shortfall rather than raising your taxes, which are pretty so high anyway, you can't clean here, however. The other thing is, you know, you've got lots of land, golf fields, you know, like Lisa said, and so if you can move money around, move money around, you don't need to, you know, keep all that capital money if you're not willing to.
You cannot, once you move money into the capital account, you can't move it out of there.
Yeah, there's. Say that again.
Once you move money into a capital account, you can't move it out of there, you can't move it out.
Anything to ask, but you can't take money from here and put it into capital.
You can only transfer into the capital account, and then that capital account can be used for capital expenditures.
So you could never, ever, ever take money if you have millions of dollars sitting in a capital camp, and you, and you have a need here, you can't ever use that.
Only, only, not unless it's a capital expenditure. Okay, we have a question on the front.
So, it kind of ties into the capital account. Other money that's sitting in other accounts off this balance sheet, is there other certificates of deposit or anything comparable to that is generating income in terms of interest that should be added into the revenue of the budget?
So, no, so are, what you're seeing on this screen is the total of the revenues. What you're not seeing is the capital projects, the capital bond budget, because that's not part of the general fund, so that is a separate account, but there's nothing else that's interest bearing, that is not being represented for the revenue.
And just one other question, I might. Do you get to your department heads and ask them to look and see, you know, if, if perhaps maybe they didn't spend an extra fifty thousand dollars that year?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I'm the meanest.
And return that back to the budget.
Person here, so, I, I, I mean, I, I, they'll tell you. And they'll tell you, I'm the meanest person here. That my word is no, 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 and we actually start shutting down the budget, um, so they can't do any more expenditures, they cry and plead in bed. Um, but, yeah, that's why we stay, that's why we end up not using our fund balance, we are very, very conservative.
Because we all, we all hear the stories of, if I don't spend it, I have to give it back, and I won't get that increase next year.
No, that's not true, and that's not how I work, and that's not, that's not how I, I operate here. And you have to remember, each time we do the budget, there are things that we cannot do. So when you heard Ms. Gusek talk about the counselors, you'll, you'll hear later tonight about the incredible need for mental health supports. We have one counselor for five hundred kids. We have a psychologist for twelve hundred kids. We have one home and school visitor for forty one hundred kids. We don't have enough support services, but we cannot, we don't have the money. And so we ask these people to do more and more and more. And, and that's why, when, when I ask you to please go to your legislators, that's why. We need your voice to be there, saying, what are you doing about charter, charter school reform? These charter schools have a hundred billion dollars in fund balance, that's your money in a fund balance. Forty six thousand dollars for a student with a special ed, whose main special ed needs is articulation, being able to say the R consonant clearly, forty six thousand dollars, that's not going to remediate that. That's a flat fee, that the, the charter schools get to say, here, public taxpayer, here, all of you, send us, send us your money. Okay, um, we need to make a decision for Dr. Scott about the Act One Index. From my count, it seems to be split, Rob, you haven't weighed in, whether three two or three four? So it's three four? Okay, Vanessa, it's three four.
With counselors, yes. No, no, no.
Okay, all right. That's not going to give you a counselor. Vanessa, I've. Vanessa, are you done with your presentation?
Budget, yes.
Okay, all right. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All right, so the next items, um, if there are no questions, we have the budget transfers. Were there any questions on budget transfers? Um, Media Elementary, their school legacy project, um, we'll be looking for a decision at the meeting whether to go for that project. Um, Mrs. Hunt wanted to discuss the Delaware County Community College report.
Yeah. So, um, in February, two vacancies came up on the Delaware County. In February, two vacancies came up on the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees, which is, was a school board, um, for the college, and, um, for those who don't know this, and I will say, even I didn't know this, I haven't long been on the board for two years, that the, um, the selection of the Board of Trustees is actually made by all of the sponsoring district school board liaisons. And this gentleman, Mike Capazoli, who's been on the Ridge School District since nineteen seventy six, who is the leader of our committee, the chair of committee, and there were four applicants who came in and interviewed for those two positions about three weeks ago. And just as a quick overview, we have two, uh, the two candidates that were selected were Kimberly Reed. Is that the first one, okay, so that's the other one, that's Elizabeth, um, we can just quickly, Elizabeth Shepherd Robidog. She has an educational background, she's worked at Philadelphia University, Jackson University, Tupperware University. Um, she absolutely understands the collegiate experience, and she's very much focused on, um, both the governance part of this, so she knows she's not in here to do the work, but to govern the system, and she also is extremely, um, cognizant of the Delaware County mission to service all students in the community, and that means, you know, people might say, oh, I'd like to go take a class to our dual enrollment students, and Delaware County Community College also services a lot, a large number of students who have been boxed out of a lot of traditional higher education for cost reasons and, and other support reasons, and so she is, um, uh, she's been, she's in the head of her school district, and right now, she, that's where she is, and she's been in the area for quite some time, and she's very, very excited to, um, inform that. The next person is Kimberly Reed. Kimberly Reed has a combination of experience both in higher education, but also in communication. Um, she's a communications consultant now. She's spent a lot of time recently in Delaware, and has recently relocated to this area. And she also is very aligned with both the mission of the, of the college, as well as understanding the role of governance of the Board of Trustees, and also a big proponent of communicating missions of the district farther and larger than where it is now, especially the new chapter. So, uh, the next board meeting, we will be voting as to whether to accept these recommendations that came from all of the, uh, board liaisons from the thirteen county areas.
Thank you.
It just says an additional note. I'm not sure anyone requested it before, but this requires a vote.
I'm not sure anyone requested it before, but this requires a vote of all of the. So then scrolling down through the agenda, I believe if everyone had things to look at or if you have any questions on the additional items.
The cost of that bus, a hundred forty one thousand. Is that the cost of this school bus?
Yes.
Now, any ADA? It's just regular school.
Yes, that's just the federal seventy two crash of the bus. Um so that's the total cost of the bus. When the bus was totaled, we did receive a reimbursement from the insurance company for about ninety five thousand. So we will be paying the difference.
Was it was there, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Was there insurance on that?
Yes, so the. The bus that we're replacing is a CNG bus that was involved in accidents. So we did receive an insurance payment of ninety about ninety thousand dollars. So the district will be responsible for paying the difference to replace that bus.
Was the bus being full?
Yes.
Do you finance in the balance? Or just a one time payment?
It would be a one time payment. Are we ready for the education wellness?
I'll introduce, are you scrolling? I'll be great. You can scroll, that's fine. Alright. Good evening, everyone. Um with us tonight, um we have Dr. Sweeney, who will be presenting um courses enrolled under fifteen. For next year, this is um in accordance with our board policy um that we do this when enrollment is less than fifteen. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, um in the report, and I don't know if uh Dr. Scott, you can see that. I've never been told that before.
Can you um can you see this? There's an there should be an attachment.
Should be an attachment, a chart. Well, you know that at Pancras High School over the last two months, we've been um collecting course requests from students. And this is the time of year when I compile those and uh we start to staff sections. And we have to make some hard decisions when classes run small um in order to use our resources wisely, in order for departments to run courses that are sequential. Uh and in order to meet the needs of our chi- uh children. So on the chart in front of you, um you'll see courses that have requested at under fifteen. Um the courses on the left, we are asking permission not to offer next year. Uh I do track how many times a course is selected as an alternate to an elective. The the grade of the children who select that is an alternate in terms of its sequential nature. And we do, uh as department coordinators and departments, um believe that these courses uh the the resources can be used elsewhere next year. So core intro to dance. Does not look as if it was running next year. Music theory, enrolled very low. Singers and songwriters, theater lab enrolled low. Um visual design even combined enrolled low um and wellness. And again, their alternates for these were very small. In the middle, we have the yellow yield, and these are sequential courses where traditionally, actually, we have had advanced students working in the same classroom. Um as students in the foundational courses, as leaders and as independent study, uh capable of more independent study and advanced study. So computer science, uh we would like to put the advanced computer science students, um group them with the computer science principal students. The uh ENM physics C students can work in the sections where we offer the mechanics physics C. They use the same materials and the same instructor. So that works out very well. Advanced child development, the double credit, um students will be grouped during the child development one courses. Advanced studies in architecture, we will probably split them with transportation and manufacturing, because the students' interests in those particular areas. Art three, you know, we're going to run two sections of art. Two of the art three students will split and run at the same time. Um engineering, design and manufacturing can be easily confined with the advanced studies in engineering. AP drawing, we began this year because some of our portfolio students want to take AP drawing and it behooves them to have that transcribed. So those students will be um doing that work and preparing for the exam with the portfolio prep work. And the TV production two students, of course, will be the leaders for the production one. The green on the right, these are five courses that we are asking permission um to run at under fifteen. Um some of them will not grow much over the summer. AP capstone research, um which is the second of the AP capstone courses, will be enrolled at ten. And we're asking that you enroll that culminating course. Um our students this year selected very cautiously. And that you'll see that in some of those in AP research, for example. Um the selection for the foundational course is much more robust this year. AP chemistry enrolled at twelve. It's important for us to offer that course. Chinese, um foreign AP Chinese, they're a combined group of eight. Uh French one, we do traditionally see growth in French as students come to us from other places and other systems. Uh and linear algebra, the linear algebra students are students who have expended our advanced placement math curriculum and want to companion or transcribe a linear algebra for their final year of high school. So the bulk of the courses we do try to offer in the mixed mode. And the five courses we would like to offer at under fifteen, I've listed in green. So you can give the green line. Um there's a very few alternates to that. And with the retirement of Steve Miscanti. Um I think that that department needs to look a little bit at what the future of the department is and where some of those resources can be used. A number of those students had strong alternates for other areas, especially engineering. Um and we conserve their needs and keep them in the tech ed department.
For the French, um is that true of all?
Uh French and Spanish, we do not get a big bump in French. We did this year. We had a nice bump in French, but we do have some growth traditionally uh in French. Because a lot of our students take world language uh in French and Spanish here at Pancras High School. We don't have that many students who begin in the first year of any language, but when we do get students who come to us from the private schools or from other systems. Uh we do like to offer it, and particularly with the Global Scholars Honors Program. Um we like to make that foundational range in all four of our languages available. It's actually, it's an important part of the Global Scholars Program. Thank you. Any other question?
Yes. I do have a couple of questions. Could you quantify what type of growth you would expect to see from French one? To lobby for keeping a class size of three students?
For the for the yeah, and for the current five, the cost of that is bigger classes in our current French two program. To absorb that so that we actually have to to give up something in that uh French program in order to offer that French course. Um this year, I don't know how many we added. This was actually, we added more than usual this year to French one, Mrs. Sabatini. Uh a number of our transfer students were in French one or were starting French when they arrived this year. Um or took it up as a second language when they arrived. But we do offer the first year in every one of our languages that moves towards AP. And so we do try to offer that so that it's available to students when they come to us.
And in these classes that are less than fifteen.
Yes.
Are there paraprofessional personnel in those classes? Over and above the teachers, if it one teacher?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's what my assumption is. I mean, ages are assigned as needed um for the students in the room. I don't know from year to year.
There's not a classroom age that makes, I mean, you have previous student in those classes who's through their IP as a one to one to that student.
That's not. Right. Yeah, you I I always, one teacher, one classroom.
Thank you.
Yeah, I.
This is because most of our students also come, which is in the schools, they come in to the high school and they're not in French or Spanish or anything. They they're basically already in French two. So this is to accommodate students who come to us, they group, have no real languages, because we don't offer it and they can't pursue those languages.
Correct, correct.
There are questions. The the AP classes um that you want to offer, is the district required to pay for the AP testing or is the families?
Uh we ask families to pay for the AP classes at this point. That's the tradition.
Okay.
I assume there's a French two for this?
Yes, sir.
And it has more enrollment than the French one?
Oh, yes. Yes, uh uh they come to us from Springs and Lake. Most of the students who come to us from eighth grade go straight into French two. Predicted for next year? Wait just a minute, I have it up on my computer. Predicted for French two next year, we have about sixty five. We may run that at three. We're going to try to run that at three, especially for a we just had two more add today, actually, so that's not updated. So keep it down about twenty one, twenty two if we can for language class.
Okay, thank you. So this item, you'll see this item on the legislative agenda. Thank you, Dr. Sweeney.
Thank you. Going to sneak behind.
Sure. Um so another item for our legislative agenda is approval of the calendar for the end of this school year. So June fifteenth will be the last day for students and teachers. It will be a half day. So you will see this item on the legislative agenda. Now, that's provided that there's no snow.
Don't laugh.
Oh, I'm sorry, full day for teachers, half day for students. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Yeah, these are these are contractual as well. That was a rumble from the teachers when they found out this is it's a full day. So um just another uh couple informational updates before I turn it over to um Dr. Garner. So it is PSSA season. Um so PSSA testing will take place at the end of April. Um we literally just got a notice today that they are extending the window for testing, so. I may um, you know, reach back out to the principals and see what we want to do. So we might adjust the actual test dates to spread them out a little bit more, but we'll see. What our principals and teachers want to do.
How many requests out? Sorry. I'm sorry, again, I didn't know.
Yeah, so that was just an informational update. And also, um you will be asked at the legislative meeting to approve names of community members who will be participating on our in our comprehensive planning process. We are in the process now of gathering those names. Thank you. And question?
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry. Yes. So um I think that they really, they really have up until the test to do that. Um we haven't had extreme numbers so far. We've only had a couple of parents come in and request to opt out. Um but the opt outs are, as they were traditionally, the only legal reason to opt out would be for religious reasons. And we are clear that whether it's a religiously reason or a refusal to take the test, it does impact the school's percentages. Right? They still count as potential testers. So when we work, so at the end of the test, when we get our results and they report out our percentages of kids that score proficient or advanced, the kids that opt out are counted in that. Correct. Correct. So it hurts, it does hurt our numbers.
So you think we'll have better this year?
Yeah, well, there again, like um as we've talked to you guys in in great detail, and you'll hear even more again um next month. Um there's so many variables, and the one variable is the test itself. When they, you know, weigh different standards more than they did the previous year, things like that. So if it was the same test every year, testing the same thing, I would love to say. I would love every year to be able to predict what's going to happen, right? But I would, I would think with the type of instruction that's we're in school and a little bit more consistent than we have been, that our scores will go up. However, we are definitely seeing the COVID effect. Kids have missed standards, so we are still recovering from that. So it is going to be interesting to see what the results are. But if you're asking me, I anticipate it really being like a two to three year recovery with these standardized tests. Yes, we we do. Yes, we let them know as they're, when they call and schedule the meeting, we tell those parents specifically that. But it but to be honest with you, like if you're a parent that wants to opt your child out, you're probably not worried about the school district's test scores. I mean, that's the and that's just honest, like conversation with you, like that's the conversation that I've had with parents over the past however many years. And I tell them, they're like, yeah, but you know, I'm still worried about my child, not necessarily the school district's scores. Um I think typically we have three or four. I know we have at least um three or four names right now of people that have submitted. Um typically, that's what's been the number, but it again, like we only do this every, you know, a few years or so, so um I don't know the exact number that we have this year right now. And so are we, and that is forefront on our mind. Um yeah, I will I will work with Dr. Kumrat on that, but we are absolutely being intentional about getting a nice cross section and representation of our community. We've only had, I believe, two so far, or two families so far. I don't want to say two students, but um typically in the past, in normal years, I've had um anywhere from fifteen to twenty students opt out. I agree. Yeah, yes, yep.
Does PSSA testing have any um uh the ways for federal state funding?
No.
It's just basically the old fashioned, how good our teachers are or not doing.
Yeah, and this is it's really, it really is meant to um it's a school assessment to assess our schools. And we use it for that. However, we also, but we also use that data to drive instruction as well.
Oh, hey, my kid got her thumbs down fifth grade, thinking home. PSSA at home.
That's great. Um, from last year, I don't know, Dr. Sweeney might know when our most, Dr. Sweeney might know when our most current rankings come out. U.S. News and World Report, I know that we.
Well, for Penn Press High School is about six percent, top six percent of the state. They're both around sixty percent.
Is that Dr. Garner? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I do have a presentation next, but before we get to that, there are several contracts on the agenda and several policies. So just for the record in the policy section. So policy two forty-nine is the cyberbullying, bullying policy that's required to be reviewed every three years. We did talk about this back in June, but then there was a delay for obvious reasons with policy discussion, so it's back on. But for the record, it's not in relation to Title Nine. That is for actually policy two eighteen point three. The addition for the bullying, cyberbullying policy is in relation to the threat assessment process that you'll see bolded in that policy on page two. So this is a first read for each three of these policies. Two forty-seven hazing and two eighteen point three, discipline of student convicted or adjudicated of sexual assault. Those are new policies that are recommend, actually required to be in compliance with the law and as written by P S B A. So those are first reads. If there are any questions about those policies or the contracts, I can take those now. I do have some policy questions. You knew I would. All right, so on two eighteen point three. Adjudicated is not defined. Uh, adjudicated is not defined, and I thought it should be. And then there were a lot of instances where it just says a student who was convicted and, and adjudicated was not included in that. And then on the second page, under delegation of responsibility, the larger paragraph after one, two, and three, I thought was very confusing. That's what I had for that one. And then for cyberbullying, it didn't talk about use of the school computer. And I wasn't sure if it should. And, um, wasn't sure if there was a way to sort of expand some language around who it could be reported to. It really just talks about the building principal. And maybe that could be a potential conflict or, you know, discomfort. So either that gets struck or expanded. Okay. Thank you for indulging. Any other thoughts or suggestions to the policies for first read?
Yeah, I, just the bullying and cyberbullying policy, I thought we might want to take a look at updating some language and be more specific about what cyberbullying is and where it can take place and where we have jurisdiction.
Okay. So I will do some research and bring this back to the board for second read next month.
Um, I was just gonna add the whole about the on, using this, uh, district device is an important one because it kind of does change the definition we talked about. Whether it occurs in a school, this school setting and all those kinds of things, but if you are a device, that's issued by the school, it shouldn't matter what setting it's used in.
So I will certainly look into that. And I also know that we have the acceptable use policy that also dictates how students are to use district devices. So that may already cover that type of behavior regardless of the location, if it's on a school device, but we can see what the overlap would be between those two policies. Yeah, so I'm going to move into the presentation on social emotional learning. There with me, I'm not used to pieces, I'm used to next. Okay, so this evening is an informational presentation on social emotional supports and C learning. And so we're going to go through a number of things, talk about some what our district goals are, what the data says, what interventions we have in place. And then really what social emotional learning is and what the C framework looks like and how it's applied in our schools at this time. Um, I do have three people accompanying me tonight, Dr. Layton, Dr. Robinson, and Mr. Sango. And I do want to thank them for all of their hard work because they are really the people who are, you know, working directly with teachers. They are the ones, you know, kind of helping to kind of pull all this together at the building level. So I want to thank them and they may need to chime in here in a minute, but I do want to acknowledge them and their work. So as we know, one of our strategic plan goals is specific to wellness. So looking at how do we provide social emotional and physical wellness strategies and supports. And one of the main goals actually that was developed in the last strategic plan was to implement a K twelve social emotional learning curriculum. And so that's one of the things that we'll talk about that tonight and what that looks like. So as we discussed earlier tonight and actually last month, I wanted to just point out specifically what our actual ratios are for student support services. As you can see at the bottom, that's the national recommendation from the National Organization for that service. So the American School Counselor Association recommends one counselor to two hundred and fifty students. As you can see, we are meeting that at the high school. We're close at the middle school, but we're about one to five hundred, like Dr. D said earlier tonight, for elementary. She also mentioned the school psychologist and the social worker, and I did add the nurses there as well. The recommendation is one to seven hundred and fifty. Obviously, at our secondary levels, we're a little bit higher than that. Asterces there represent that we do have some one to two day support to those buildings, but it still doesn't take the bulk of the student population away from those nurses. So some of the things that we do to support students, that number up anyway, is provide therapeutic facilitator services. We did discuss this last month in the context of the budget. But I wanted to show you the trend of this service over time. So on this graph is just the total number of students who have I E Ps and five oh fours who receive this service of therapeutic facilitator. And that individual is a person who's either a clinical psychologist or certified counselor or behavior specialist who works individually with students or in small groups to help them work through a variety of different things that they're struggling with. It's written into their I E Ps and five oh fours, and so we're legally required to provide that service if that's a service that is needed. So obviously, two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had a hundred and thirty-two students receiving that service. So any students who had that service during the shutdown still continued to receive that service. So I wanted to make sure that that was noted. And the data for twenty-one, twenty-two that you'll see tonight on this slide and the next is collected as of March twenty-fifth. So last week or so was when I said I wanted the, the data for these services. So any students who have a new service recommended from this point forward is not reflected in these data. You'll see in the bottom left corner, and I apologize, the total, I know fifty-nine and sixty-eight does not equal sixty-eight, it does equal the one twenty-seven. And in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the data is only reflected in Springton because when I looked back at the previous data, it was reported not by grade, our school, it was reported by service provider. And so we have a service provider at that time who was servicing both middle school and elementary. And so I wasn't able to parse out what those numbers actually were. But what you'll see with the trends over time is that the true increase of the services at the high school level. Is that because, perhaps because it, it was needed more and then those kids are moving up over the years or is there another reason? It could be that factor, but we have seen obviously a steady trend at the high school level, particularly this year for students struggling with mental health.
For just high school. Play in high school. More behavioral challenge, the elementary and externalized behaviors. But at the high school nationally, we're seeing a lot more mental health.
So speaking of mental health, one of the things that we do in response to students who indicate a threat to themselves or others is we screen them. So if a student says, I want to hurt myself or I want to hurt someone else, the counselor or the psychologist or someone who hears that type of threat will then do a crisis screening on the child. So they'll go through a series of questions and they'll determine the level of severity of that threat that the child is posing to themselves or someone else. You'll see here the, the way this graph is set up, the linear line, linear line. The line part of the graph is the total number of students and then you can see it broken up by elementary, middle, and high school. A few points about this data set. In, obviously, March of two thousand twenty, we shut down. So we did still conduct crisis screens as we saw via Zoom. If we noticed that a student was at home and there was something that was said, we would still conduct those screenings via Zoom. Last school year, interestingly, the numbers were lower, and I think that's attributed to the fact that our students were not fully in front of us. And a lot of students who were at home may not have verbalized that they were considering hurting themselves or others, and so we would not have been able to have access to intervene for those students. Again, twenty-one, twenty-two, this data is as of March twenty-fifth. So you can see the staggering increase of students who have indicated that they have thought of either harming themselves or harming someone else. The other piece of this is that we have had a new threat assessment process implemented this school year. There was a new law that was passed under the school safety, part of the law, PA code that requires every school district to have a threat assessment team in the district. And so we had to go through development, developing that process, training all of the teachers. I went building to building and, you know, shared this information with them. So I think there was also a heightened awareness of students who may have drawn a picture of a gun and we, you know, maybe in the past would have just said, oh, you know, don't draw that again, but now we're really responding to, you know, going through a series of questions to make sure the child's not actually a threat to himself or others. So that also could be attributed to some of the increase as well.
So in, in terms of, that's a lot of people.
These are students.
How are you coming across this? Are they coming to you as really the same behaviors that the parents have?
So these are, these are, these represent the number of students who, not even number of students, a hundred and six could represent one student who made three threats to themselves. So that might account for a lot fewer students. But what will happen is the student might make a comment to a teacher and then the teacher will report that to the school counselor or the school psychologist, and then we will work with that student and we have a very clear process of, okay, am I threatening to hurt myself? Do I want to cause harm? And these are the questions that I ask and this is what I go through. We contact the parents, you know, if they need crisis support, you know, we have, provide them resources, et cetera. So every school is aware of what that process looks like and who to go to. And they know, teachers know, and administrators and everybody knows that as soon as a student makes this comment, you meet, you refer that immediately. You don't wait until the end of the period, you don't wait until the end of the school day. It needs to be handled immediately.
Some of them suffer or any of the children. Other kids are saying, I worry about my friend. And we have safety setting, which is the tip. So we can get a anonymous tip, we get a tip lock. The school responds to that.
Do you see a lot of cutting?
I'm sorry, I want to, I want to go to the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know there was.
Um, so I, I know you've seen this triangle before in the context of MTSS and epidemics. But MTSS and this intervention triangle, if you will, is certainly used for behavior emotional supports. So at the bottom, we have what is available to all students. What do we provide for every single student regardless of what they're presenting with? So that would be, for example, social emotional learning or C, and we'll talk more about that, or positive behavior intervention support, so PBIS, so school-wide reward systems to promote positive behavior. And then if we find students aren't succeeding with that level of support, then we move to the tier two. So that would be small group counseling, we have check and connect. Uh, so there's not just, obviously, these are just two examples of the tier two interventions that we can provide. And then if a student's really not responding and needs specialized or individualized support, that's when we might want to do a functional behavior assessment to figure out what is the reason behind the behavior. A therapeutic facilitator, which I've spoken about, or maybe we have to develop a need dependence attendance improvement plan specific to that student. So this is kind of just the same tiered process that we use for academics. So what is the difference between SEL, which is social emotional learning, and social emotional and ethical learning, which is the S E E parts? The second E is that, that ethical piece. So the SEL is really a reference to programs. You might see like second step as a program, some of them were like Obey Us, Anti-Bullying, et cetera. But what the E part that S E E does is build on that framework and provides more specific attention to things like mindfulness, compassion, understanding how my actions affect others in the world. And it really brings in the systems perspective. And the other piece of this too, as I referenced earlier with the counselors, is that there are standards that the counselors follow under ASCAP, American School Counsel Association. That also fit under this model of C where, you know, there are mindset standards where we expect students to develop a sense of acceptance, respect, support, and inclusion for self and others. We have, there's behavior standards and learning and self-management. So we want our students to make ethical decisions and have some social responsibility and also, you know, have effective coping skills. So all these things that our counselors are expected to help work with our students and also help support the C and SEL instruction. Dr. D, do you like to take these? I know.
I get to put on my old hat. So, you know, I get this question a lot, why do we, why do we teach S E E in school? Why is this part of our academic program? And it's really because when you look at what supports academic achievement, you have all of these, what we call non-cognitive factors. So for example, academic mindsets, which is really, go to the next one, then I can shake. So that academic mindset are things that kids tell themselves about what kind of learner they are and how much they belong, how much of an academic person they are. So I belong in this academic community, my ability and competence grows with my effort, I can succeed at this, this work is valued for me. And when kids have strong academic mindsets, it supports their academic perse, perseverance, where they're able to kind of be tenacious and gritty through difficult challenging work. They're able to self-select challenging curriculum and feel like they are able to be successful in that challenging curriculum. That academic perseverance supports academic behavior. So all of those things that make kids be good students and successful students. I go to class, I do my homework, I listen to the teacher, I collaborate with the other students in my class. And that all supports academic performance and achievement, and high academic performance and achievement self cycles back to academic mindset. So those kids who are academic successful have an academic mindset that says, I belong here. And so it's kind of a self-feeding system. And you'll see on the sides that there are social skills that impact academic behavior. So how good my interpersonal skills are, how good my conflict management skills are, how well I can work in a collaborative or small group setting with my peers, that feeds into academic behaviors. What kind of strategies can I access? So what are my study skills like? How much can I regulate my attention to pay attention in class or to when I go home to start my homework and kind of hang in there to complete homework? So a lot of the S E E skills tap all of these areas that support academic achievement. And it strengthens those kids so that that strengthens their academic achievement. And it strengthens those kids so that that strengthens their academic achievement.
So part of the C framework, and just as a side note, we've discussed this before, but C actually comes out of Emory University. And the Dalai Lama, in fact, and Eleanor has actually had an opportunity to be part of this process and helping develop some of this work. So the three major domains of this framework of C is social, personal and systems. And then combine that with the three dimensions of awareness, compassion and engagement. When you put all those things together, you have these nine components. And these are really the the tinier sections of the lesson where you can really get at, what does it mean to have skills in relationships? How do I appreciate interdependence? And so every lesson that's part of the framework touches on at least one of these nine components.
And they're developmental. So you start sort of with the personal and then you get kind of the interpersonal and then you get kind of get this sense of a global interdependence that we have.
And so the model really is to work through three levels of understanding with students. So, you know, really want that initial instruction with reading, listening, and then moving into that application piece. And then the ultimate goal is that they embody that understanding, they internalize it, and then it's able to be transformative. The teacher's role here though is really a facilitator. So it's not a stand and deliver, it's not a lecture, it really is a collaborative process where the teacher is facilitating conversations with students, getting them to think about their thinking, getting them to think about how they're feeling about certain things, and then helping them, students to think for themselves. And so each learning experience that the students will have with this model is that they will do a check-in. So the teacher will ask, you know, how are you today? Let's, you know, are we, how are we feeling? And then that'll move into that presentation piece where that received knowledge part comes in. And then you'll see the insight reflective and then debriefing. So we're always going to be bringing it back to, okay, how are we going to reflect on this, how are we going to apply it? And then end with, you know, some kind of debriefing situation for students to really walk away with a thorough understanding. And so C puts things into units. And so we know that in the beginning of the school year, it's best practice to establish a classroom environment. And so that's the first unit that all of our classrooms have been using is the creating a compassionate classroom unit. Everybody K to 12 has really focused on how do we establish that relationship with our students, build a community within the classroom. And then there's other lessons, units that move throughout the school year that build on all those other skills in the component framework. And it's not a curriculum. We're not using it as a curriculum. We could use it lockstep, here's lesson one, here's lesson two, here's lesson three. But our teachers who have worked really hard on this, K to 12, understand that we need to take this framework and massage it and make it work for our students at each level. So really it is a framework. There really isn't much at the secondary level, we'll talk about what that looks like at the high school in particular. But these are just general frameworks of units that we will be moving through throughout the year. So at elementary, we really use this time period during morning meeting or some other specific time, 30 minutes per week. So it's heavily done more frequently in the beginning of the school year and then throughout the year, a week on a weekly basis. And the nice thing about having that done in the homeroom is that classroom teachers at elementary can then filter that throughout their school day. They can bring this back in a social studies lesson where they're talking about, you know, some potential conflict. And so how do you use those skills of how to relate to others? How does that play into some conflict they're learning about in social studies? And then we're also trying to use that in special area classes as well. Our teachers are recognizing that this is a need. Obviously, we all recognize this is a need and our students are responding very positively. So we do have a video, oh, before we get to that. So we collected, Dr. Robinson collected some statements from students at the elementary level. And the things that I'm not going to read them to you, but the fact that we have children in kindergarten through fifth grade using words like resilient and grounding is pretty remarkable. And so, you know, these students are really learning some of these lifelong skills on how to be self-aware and how to, you know, work through their school day. So we're going to show a video. This is from Roastery Elementary and I will apologize, there is some shaky video, but the message is still the same, so.
Do you believe at this time, the students in the class require the type of instruction that is included? The, in the S E E framework?
Yes, I do. Over the past couple of years, with the way school has been, some students have been fully virtual, some students were here for part of the year last year. I feel like a lot of the social skills of playing and being kind to each other, they kind of lost a little bit of that. They're enamored with the technology. There are a lot of kids that don't play outside, they just want to be on their iPads all the time. And I think teaching them about appropriate play, appropriate actions with each other, we definitely get this.
All right. Where are, do you like to say, or are we talking about the learning yet? But you can think of a lot of moving in your mind. And we have a lot of thoughts in the past. My thoughts are before and now. So Simon. And now I want you to think of the second one. How many of you were? Were you very confident in what you did? Were you a little bit frustrated and questioned?
I don't know if they are responding to the discussions we're giving or the activities you have planned.
So this year specifically, we focused on kindness in the very beginning of the year. We built kindness chains where the kids had to identify kind acts from their friends. And not forced kindness, but just they noticed someone doing something kind. Our chain is very long now, it's spread down the hallway. It's really nice to see them working hard to be kind to each other. We've had some arguments and some little things that happened because, you know, they're eight, nine years old. But I feel like for the most part, they're really focused on what it means to be a kind person. We also focus on different strategies for self-regulating, when our bodies fail out of control, when we get really angry, really sad and how we get back in that emotional zone. So our students are doing a really good job with that. They know sometimes just to take a drink of water, sometimes just to focus on sound in the room, sometimes to lean up against the wall, put their hands on top of their basket and help them to kind of get their balance again.
Yes, that's the next one. The okay zone is the the zone, not, yeah, it's not a case of, for that to like active and okay.
No, one more, while making connection between the okay zone and the not okay zone. What was that R word? When you are okay, say it on three, one, two, three.
Resilience.
Right, resilience. All right, one more, Alexa, let's just. Excellent. Now, I need you to see if you can make a connection between your thoughts and your feelings, this picture and then this picture. Miles, what do you think?
Okay, so I feel like it's definitely working.
That's good, because that was going to be my third question, are you seeing them applying these skills today, every day?
Yes, they absolutely are. We have a couple of kids in here that suffer from anxiety and ways that we work with them are the same things that their counselors outside of school are working with them. And they do know to, you know, just kind of stop and take a breath and try and focus on something else. There's a lot of kids in here that might use just a stress ball or something, something like that to kind of help them through. So we've noticed even with our kids that have no anxiety at all, when they get upset, they can really kind of come back and regulate themselves and get back into the flow of the school day much more easily.
So it's a nice little taste of what's happening in our elementary schools. Thank you, Dr. Robinson, for putting that together. So at the middle school level, this is done during advisory. And so like I had mentioned earlier, we're not doing the curriculum the way we could in lockstep. So our middle school team, under Dr. Layton's direction, have really looked at the framework, figured out what pieces of C are really relevant for middle school students. And then they also use advisory for other things besides just C, because there are a lot of things that middle schoolers need to work through. So they do work on lessons such as compassion, you know, isn't inequality, how to explore empathy. And so these are some of the statements that our middle school students are saying about their advisory. So, you know, it's a safe space, it's a place where they can learn emotionally and socially. They've learned mindfulness. So again, our students here are also finding that this is beneficial and that they're applying these things in different places of their lives. It looks a little bit different at Penn Crest. So like I had mentioned, there are frameworks, they are fully established at K two, three, five and six to eight. To date, I believe the high school is still in draft form. So we have fortunately been able to get the draft from Emory University and we're working through that. But Dave, can you speak specifically to the high school process?
Sure. Hi, everyone. So at the high school, like Dr. Garner said, the draft, we had a draft version of the C curriculum. Based on the same concepts, what we tried to do is get a team of teachers together last summer to kind of look at these lessons and develop sort of plug and play lessons that could be implemented sort of in an advisory model. We have IE, it's called, so. And so we've been working through that. It was two lessons per month during IE periods in the first semester, one per month during IE periods in the second semester. Some of the topics included are listed up there. They're all based on those same concepts that Dr. Garner had up before that are sort of standard within the C framework. You know, it's, it's been, I want to, real quick, I do want to say the teachers have absolutely crushed it. They've done a great job doing something that, let's be honest, is not in their comfort zone. It's not in the comfort zone of many of the people that are working with it, right out of the gate. And so to take sort of these semi-canned lessons and present them to students who are reluctant participants many times, it's not easy. And so I do want to commend everybody that did do that, the teachers that have done that. And especially the teachers that worked on sort of crafting those learning experiences for the kids. It's been, it's been a, a great process to work with those teachers, so. Our next steps at the high school, one of the things that has really come to light through this process is that really where we're going to get the most bang for the buck is when this is integrated into the classroom contact, into the things that students are learning about already in their classrooms. So when students are in their language arts class, can they have a mini lesson on compassion before they notice compassion in whatever book it is that they're reading? And then have a specific intentional, really well-articulated conversation about the concepts in the C framework. So that's kind of what we're working on now. Can a science teacher who's teaching anatomy and physiology talk about parasympathetic and sympathetic nervous system and how students can regulate their emotions through breathing? And, and, and so really trying to tie these concepts into the content that we're teaching instead of kind of these standalone canned lessons. So we're working with Emory currently to do that. There's a team of six teachers, as it says up there, diverse subject areas, working directly with folks from Emory and they're kind of leading us through this work right now.
So in terms of moving forward at the high school, you know, we know that high school students are a little bit less, as Dave said, willing to participate in some of these things. But what I will say, Jenny and I were having this conversation earlier today that, you know, as the students are introduced to this concept of learning in elementary school, doing it in high school is going to be what they've always done. So they're not going to know any different, so even the students in middle school. So I anticipate those perceptions from our students are going to be far more positive in the future. So, you know, like Dave said, we're going to continue to work with Emory, providing time to teachers to kind of help develop this so it's effective at the high school. So just to bring us back full circle, our goal in the district through the strategic plan is to provide our programs, students with programs to address social emotional needs and to implement a K 12 social emotional learning curriculum, which I feel we're really close to having mastered if you put that goal. So it's really, really a pride for our district to be able to be at that point.
Yeah, and if you look at that, if you look at the MTSS triangle, that's really, that's the tier one support, right? That's, that's developing these kind of healthy skills for all of our kids that hopefully then allows them to not need tier two supports and certainly not tier three supports, right? So it's kind of trying to strengthen that. And I think one of the things that we talk a lot about is what the world is like for our kids today. And if you're a parent, you know that. But it's such a different world than even 20 years ago. So for example, I talk to kids a lot about their phones. And why is that? Because typically you used to go to school and then you would come home and you would have time to process all of the things that happened to you in school. It was a way, especially in middle school, to get some identity consolidation. You would figure out, what happened to me and what, what did my friend really mean when they said that? These kids today never have that because they're on those phones and social media. And so the, there's input all day long, all night long. And they, they come overwhelmed and then they come to us feeling kind of undone by all that. And so some of that is teaching them to be aware of what it means to be centered and calm. Right? And, and to feel the difference in that, so they can make some choices about, what does it feel like when I put my phone away? And I can sort of detach a little bit and just kind of process the experiences that have happened today. And the kids, of course, are incredibly connected to information all the time. So there's input all the time to them around many images and messages that they don't know how to deal with. You know, so you think about what they have access to through TikTok and, and the news today. And they really are trying to process all this and they're not developmentally there yet. It's hard for adults, right? There are adults who say to me, I never watch the news anymore because it's too overwhelming. Well, imagine what that feels like when you're 12 or 14. So I really think, you know, some of, when you look at those numbers at the high school, some of that is because that we have not developed those skills yet in the little ones. And as they, as those skills get strengthened, hopefully that's not going to get looked that way at the high school.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you so much for that. I gotta commend you for this work. I think it's so important as someone who works at the Pennsylvania Humanities Council and values how people interact with each other and how we don't perceive how we interact. Having kids learning this at the earliest possible age and to be conscious of it is incredibly important. So congratulations on doing this. I wanted to ask, and maybe this was covered at other board meetings before I joined the board, but how did, how was it that the Emory program is the one you chose? And also, how are they working with other schools? And is the high school program still in development? Is that why, I mean, on their end?
Yes, yes.
So all, how do you work collaboratively and all that?
So I'm going to let Dr. Dino talk about how this came to Roastery Media specifically.
Yeah, so, I mean, I am, by training, I'm a psychologist, so, you know, and I'm old. But when I was younger, I did a lot of reading and writing, particularly in the area of compassion. And I worked with a lot of psychologists and around this concept of compassion, compassion for itself and compassion towards others. And then I kind of was not an academician anymore, I was a practitioner more so when I, I got into the, the school thing, right? So I got a little more removed from the academic piece of that. So I got a little more removed from the academic piece of that, but that academic work continued. And so um, the Emory University was really charged with developing this global framework. So the vision was, let's try to create a, a world that has some compassion and and sense of connectedness and kindness in it. And so they, Emory was sort of tasked with build this framework that schools can use to kind of help our kids develop this resilience and coping skills. Um, and so Emory started doing that. And then uh, I got a phone call and they said they, they're going to have this launch in India of this curricular framework. And the Dalai Lama is coming to launch it and um, please come and participate in this. And I said, I can't fly to India. I have a job. And they said, yeah, fly to India. So I ended up doing that. It was really a pretty incredible experience to be with a lot of school leaders from across the globe. And to have kind of this, these same conversations about what our kids needed and what, what could schools do? Um, and sometimes schools were the only standing institution, right? And we were feeding kids, we were clothing kids, we were teaching kids. It was the only safe place for many, many kids. Um, so I loved that. And and the Castle people, this is an organization um that kind of houses a lot of the uh social emotional learning. Um, the Castle folks were there and some of the, some of the struggles with the SEL work is that a lot of it is compartmentalized. So there was, there were character education programs, there was kindness programs, there was anger management programs. There were these sort of pieces, but they weren't tied into any kind of kind of cohesive framework. And that's what this curricular framework did. Um, so I, I love systemic stuff and I like kind of organization because you have to articulate the way to implement this. Um, and you, if you implement too many things piecemeal, it just turns into, it doesn't, it's not effective. And so that's really why I brought it back um along with uh other folks in the U S and and have uh kind of continued to have that developed here. So the high school piece, I think they're just, it's kind of in development now. And some of that struggle there is, there's an understanding that when you're dealing with adolescents, the relevance of those skills to what they're learning every day is, that's how you get them, right? That's how you kind of get them to make the application piece. So if you're going to teach a novel where there's a lot of conflict, what can you tie in about that? You're going to teach a novel about someone who survived trauma, how do you tie in, in that S E A, right? So um, um, yeah, and that's, that's going forward.
I, I think it's amazing. And I'm so thankful that our district is really light years ahead. Because even today on the radio, it was in WHY, the one A, they were doing a piece on education. The last 15 minutes was all about SEL work and about how everyone should be doing it. And I was just like, we're already doing it. We're so amazing. The academics are one thing, but this is really what's going to make kids adults and citizens. And just thank you. I'm so proud of this district. And I hope the kids are going home and talking about this so that the parents know really how great this district is. So thank you, Eleanor especially, because I know it's, it's in you and you're making it happen.
Yeah. And I mean, when we started a lot of it, you know, the, the behavioral models were really popular. And so, you know, everybody has PBIS, ready, responsible, respectful. And their, their, their behavioral um core values that we operationalize. So what does it mean to be respectful in the classroom, in the lunchroom, on the school bus? But unless you start helping kids understand what happens so that they end up making bad choices, they really just feel like they're not meeting a behavioral expectation. So it's getting them to be more aware of, like, am I feeling so undone that I'm not really ready to kind of be in a setting where I'm going to have good self-control right now? And that's, you know, you have to do both of those pieces.
It's making nice humans.
Making nice humans. I mean, we, I'd love to do it for the whole community, right? Because the community is hurting so much today. And really, a lot of that is this.
Well, and when you look at our society at large and the the dialogue, um, and the, I don't even have things that people say now that they would never have said five years ago, six years ago. And that's what our kids see. And we, they don't, they're not seeing self-regulation amongst the adults right now in the world. And so, um, who knows, maybe they can take some of this element out into the communities and be models for everyone. I think we have a couple of questions.
I, three, I condensed. One, I, I, I thought of it as a, one, um, my original question is cutting. Have you seen more cutting in the schools? And how is it being handled? Because it's a visible OMG.
Yeah. So we do see cutting. And I think the threat assessment is our response to that. So when we see a student who is visibly injuring themselves, we work through that crisis screen process and we connect them with resources in the community as we need to.
Now, do you, I know there was the protocol in the slide, but is there like something where there's a 911 call? We've got issues and things like that.
So there are things, there's mobile crisis is the avenue really if we're finding a student that's significant and that in that, in that moment, we can call mobile crisis and they will send a team out. Um, we can, it's not often that we would do this, but we could free or to a student if we really had to. So we do have those avenues. Uh, we could call 911, obviously, if we really felt the need to do that.
Uh, my second question is, what are the phone laws of the district? I mean, kids have phones everywhere and every time. Um, is there a nine to three, you're not allowed to have your phone out? Is it lunchtime only? Like, is there phone etiquette in every level of the district?
Yeah. So each building decides how that works for their schools. Um, obviously, there's more restriction at the elementary level. Not many of those kids have phones at all. Um, and then all the way to the high school where there's really a classroom by classroom teacher decision on how phones are handled. And, you know, all the way in between.
Okay. And my third question is, I'm just so, so blown away that you guys don't have the staff for these kids, uh, emotionally and mentally. Is there anything that the, either the community can do? Or can you reach out to colleges and do internships in the departments?
And we do do that. So we have, we have psychology interns. Um, we, we have counseling interns. We also use some of the ESAR funds to add, uh, you know, social work support and therapeutic facilitator support. I just want to go back to your question about cutting because it's a good example. Cutting behavior is um usually a behavior for a child who's feeling overwhelmed and that cutting is a, a strategy that they're using. But when you teach kids how to center and how to regulate, then that, that need isn't there. So that's why it's so important to get at these underlying skills to help kids so they don't feel that undone and desperate.
I mean, I, you know, in your video, you had, there were a couple of kids that had their masks on still. And what is, what is the district doing? You know, are we hypersensitive to these kids who are still wearing masks? Are we tuning in to make sure they're not being bullied or comments under their breath?
Yeah, they, they've been really, kids have been really respectful of anyone who was still choosing to wear a mask. And there's a lot of family situations where families have to make different decisions about risk.
Right.
Um, but we have seen no bullying about who wants to remain masked. I think uh, we were all, we all expected that this year would be a little rocky, uh, returning from COVID. Uh, I don't think any of us anticipated the level of rockiness we have seen. And this is across, at least the county, because that's what I know. That kids have come back in with a lot of need. Um, behavioral needs, emotional needs, social needs, just acclimating to routines, just it, it's been very overwhelming for the whole system and concerning, you know, heartbreaking to some extent. And the, the community resources are completely overwhelmed, completely overwhelmed. You are on a waiting list to get an inpatient bed right now. So even though you're, you need an inpatient bed, you're on a waiting list. Just think about that. And we did uh work with the Safe Schools, um, county has Safe Schools money that gets allocated. And they came to us two years ago and said, what do you want us to do with this money? Because usually it's, it's money used to harden schools, you know, cameras and door locks and all of that. And, and we all said, what we need is more mental health support for our kids. We need county resources to help our kids in schools. And so we went through a period of strategic planning and they just took that strategic plan and moved it over to the Department of Human Services uh for some kind of implementation of that. So we're watching that.
Do you do, I, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, this will answer one of your questions, and this is really a comment, and you all may be aware of it. But the district attorney in Delaware County has formed a partnership with the Delaware County Department of Health and Services to provide more mental health support. So that may speak to your concern that I heard from that side of the room about more counselors.
Yeah. And that's, that was, that was the outcome of that strategic plan. So the DA's office, who has this grant money, um, every year they would come to the schools and they would say, you know, here's your grant money. What are you using for that? And each year we've used it, the schools have used it for different things in the county. Um, so I'm trying to think, this is pre-COVID, so maybe 2019, now, maybe 2020, 2019, they said, here's your grant again. What are you going to do? And we all said, look, we, we want a real um, look at what is available under the county and what's missing. And can we get those services to be more efficient? So one of our observations was the way that some of those county services are structured right now is that everyone has to kind of go through this level of outpatient counseling. And they have to kind of fail at that level before they can access more intensive services. Well, that, that's not very cost-effective. And it's traumatizing the children and families because they now have another experience of failure and it's longer. You know, whatever issue they're having is now taking longer. So, and, and county services tend to be also very compartmentalized. So there's mental health, there's drug and alcohol, there's behavioral services. But a lot of our kids are multi-systemic, right? And we need coordinated services and we need clinicians that are sophisticated enough to deal with really deep end issues. Um, and so it's kind of having that conversation, but this is a really complex system to move. And I was on that strategic planning um team uh to help develop that strategic plan that has just shifted over to DHS. But now what, what happens at DHS, that's sort of the ongoing conversation. And, you know, the schools have spoken and said, look, we, we want to kind of come to the table and say, we're doing this every day. We're going to tell you what we need, what this needs to look like. And some of that is site-based services. In our schools, we need community site-based services. A, because we can't get kids to go sometimes, families can't get there to go. And some of these folks, it's very hard to afford really good services. And um, it's hard to navigate the mental health system. If you have a kid in crisis, you know that. It's hard. It's very confusing. So that's kind of, we're hopeful that that's going to be the next step that's going to happen, I believe.
My next question is, do you reach out to any of the senior citizens to obtain their, um, probably they would not, I mean, high school, let's, let's all face the high schools, high school. But for elementary and, and middle school, do you reach out and have a senior citizen program at all?
So we have our senior citizens uh used to come in and volunteer. Now, I don't know where we are after COVID because we had no visitors. But they used to come in and we actually had pockets of what I consider intergenerational connection. So when I was at Simon Academy, our seniors would actually come in and teach kids things like how to knit and how to sew. And there's a lot of strength in that senior population and some kids resonate to that senior population. They're not doing so good with the parenting population, right? But they really are connected to that intergenerational um population.
I mean, in Gardner Valley, we had no less than, in one, in one school on any given day, we had no less than 25 seniors.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we even made them quarter cops, we called them. They had to, you know, we put them on potty duty. And we just made them visible.
All right. I don't know if there's. My mom is on the board. Thank you. I think, oh, Chris is coming up. Chris is coming up.
She wants something. Her knees went. She wants something.
Thank you, everybody.
So I had a, a contract um in front of the board. Uh, no, no, that's fine. Um, and, but I thought it needed a little bit of presentation. So I'm going to share some, some information with you. Um, this is this is um a discussion that I started back in September, I believe, with Susan Lake. And she was my committee chair. And then I've had ongoing with Jacob as well. So um, we have a need right now to support our families and our children for the cost of damages that have, you know, happened certainly during COVID to our devices when they were home and, but have continued. Um, we are one of the few districts that not have any type of, um, whether that's a technology fee or an insurance fee for our family. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that with you this evening. So this is kind of the why behind this, um, why the contract is in with me then this evening. Um, certainly with COVID, we quickly increased the number of devices so that everyone had their own personal device to throw. Um, and that was done, um, basically looking at, using a lot of our grant money to try to increase those devices. So we used that money to, if possible, which left us with not a lot of money for a warranty. So we're coming into a new school year where none of our devices will be under warranty. So um, that'll be new in this coming year. Um, and because of the increased number of devices going back and forth between home and school and their increased use, certainly the amount of damage district-wide has, has increased. So this has led to a greater cost to our families and of course then to the districts. That's kind of my why. Um, so just to give you a little snapshot of where we are, this is just for the current year. So COVID numbers were very low. But that was when every device was home and then every device was going back and forth every other day. So I kind of, that was just the COVID year. So I'm not sharing that with, with you. So just in this current year, um, this does include our summer school damages though, however. Um, we've had 271 devices damaged. Um, and when I say that, you know, by accidental, whatever it may be. Um, that doesn't um look at the numbers that were just a hardware failure that would normally be under warranty. Um, that is a total cost to our families right now of um $7,627. And I'm going to talk about the structure of those fees. Um, and then a cost to the district because only about a little less than half of that money ever gets paid back to the district. So we obviously fix the devices and then get them back to our students. So just to talk a little bit of the cost structure currently to our families. And this is in um their agreement that families sign um at the beginning of the year. So um, with our iPads, of course, all of our iPads have a case. Um, and our Chromebooks actually, the middle school has done a great job of buying cases so that every child um can have one, which is wonderful. Um, and then most of the high school students have a case as well on their Chromebook. So first repair is um $25 for our family. And then both with Chromebooks and iPad. And then the cost of subsequent damage is really dependent on replacement parts, labor. Um, typically an iPad screen is $99 and the costs vary for our Chromebooks. Um, but the true cost is when those devices are a total loss. I mean, if you go, I'm, okay. Um, so a total loss means the iPad in particular could be repaired, but the touch panel really is never the same. Or it cannot be repaired at all. Same thing with the Chromebook. Um, and that's a $300 charge to our families or a $230 charge to the families for a Chromebook. So in response to this, you know, we really, in technology and in cabinet, really been back and forth, how do we help our families without charging them? We did a lot of research on what the districts around us are doing. Charging a tech fee that was anywhere from, the lowest we found was a $30 tech fee just to lease the equipment for the year. That's not damage. The families would still be responsible for damage, but they, you know, using our equipment, this is your lease. That's not damage. The families would still be responsible for damage, but they, you know, using our equipment, this is your lease cost. Up to, the highest was a hundred dollars per device. So some large ones. So we have worked with our insurance company, Arthur J. Gallagher, and they have provided us this proposal for a one-to-one device insurance that we could offer to our families. It would be a twenty-dollar fee, annual fee. And that zero is, would be a zero to a cost of a family that perhaps we wouldn't charge if there was a financial reason, with a cap. So if you have six children in the district, we would cap that fee so you weren't, you know, paying for that twenty dollars per device. We do, I think, have one family that has six children in the, in the district, right? So then, once that fee, that twenty-dollar annual fee just participates in this program, then this would be the cost of damage. So ten dollars, twenty-five for the second, and then never a cost of more than fifty dollars. So if the iPad or the Chromebook was completely destroyed, which we have had, the family would never be asked to pay more than fifty dollars for that device. Oh, absolutely. So if a family was waived that cost, it would probably be waived. There would be no cost for that. So the positives of, of this, the current structure we have just simply is not sustainable. You know, we've had families that, for whatever the reason, again, a lot of mobility of the devices going back and forth. They've had total losses of three devices. That's a, that's a bill. And it's not sustainable for the district either, because as I said, we're only getting back about forty-three percent of what we're, we're charging. And with, you know, with, at the secondary level, although most of our damage actually does come still from our, at the secondary or middle school level, we can say, you know, no prom tickets, no, you know, you need to, to take care of these devices. There are elementary folks, you know, we're not withholding their data. So, you know, it is, it is a struggle sometimes to kind of recoup, you know, what we put out to fix the devices. The other positive of this is just the role for our district staff. So this is a lot on our, our TAs at each building, you know, they have to contact the family the first time. And then they have to keep checking in, right? So, oh, do, you know, the device that's now fixed, you owe this amount of money, so they're kind of chasing that. It's a lot of stress on our principals when our principals decide, hey, we want to waive this fee for certain families. And then it kind of goes back and forth as to, you know, just, it's, it's a lot on them to have to make those decisions. And this would allow the insurance company to make that decision, right? So the thing that gets online, they enroll, they pay the waiver, and then if a device is damaged, it does come to the district. You know, it comes to my TAs, they will log that, will still go through a process of fixing the devices as we always have. But the insurance company takes over letting them know, you know, this is your waiver fee, this is the amount, you know, you pay the ten dollars or whatever. And then the, the insurance company will cut the district a check quarterly for whatever amount of money that we have put out to repair the devices. And it's a very, it's all on the website, it's just the ease of use for families as well. So that is the contract before you. We are still discussing a little bit of, in cabinet, of the, the CAC, whether that's a two children or three children. But that will not change the cost for the waiver and the, and the participation. Are there any questions? Pardon? Nothing for us. They do retain three dollars per device. That's how I guess they make their money as well. We, I have visited two districts using them as far as looking through the website, talking to the tech directors of those districts. Mark Newtale is, is one of them. And their practices, it is the company, insurance company that we use for our cyber insurance. It's been very positive. We did. I can tell you every fee for every district that surrounds us, if you are interested, I am happy to email out that information. Anyway.
One quick question there about the warranty situation. So everything's going to be out of warranty in this next year. And then you're going to eventually buy new equipment, right? And there'll be some warranty on some of it.
Correct. So what happened with the most recent Chromebook purchase? It was all purchased through the grant, and we used all the money to get the devices, and there was simply not money left over to buy the extra warranty. The warranty on iPads is quite expensive, Apple Care, it's, and again, it just.
So there's no warranty that comes with it at all?
No, you have to purchase.
Okay.
Some of our older Chromebooks came with a one-year warranty, and that really is hardware failure.
Hillary, can you use your mic? Because people who are listening are going to hear you.
I am sorry.
No problem.
Everyone's mastered that button there tonight. I'm very excited about it.
Are, are students allowed to use their own computers?
Right now, no. I mean, they can certainly, we have a guest network, but to really engage in the type of robust task and activities that they're asked to do. And, and that is, you know, Mark Newtale is someone that I, I talked with a lot about this. That is their policy. If you don't participate in their insurance, you don't get a device. And, but you can have, they give three options for what you can bring into the district, and then you have to stay on their guest network. And that's not something that we are really interested in.
Don't do it.
Our families, but. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're driving, Dr. Scott. All right, thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Nice to see everybody again. I'm sorry, I will try to talk very loud. I'm sorry you hear that. So we're going to begin with the items for legislative agenda. As the board is aware, these items came out on Friday from, from Gail. Just curious if anybody has any questions at this point in time of what we're doing. There was only a couple items, about five items, I believe, we will be adding to this list when you see it again on April twenty-second. And then on the April twenty-eighth board meeting, there will, will be an addendum to this, because that's what we do in human resources. We're always busy hiring and moving people around. So that's what we have at this point. If there are no questions, we're going to move on to the second item on our agenda, which is job classifications, hourly rates under fifteen. I was asked by Jackie on March tenth during the work session to provide a list of job classifications that make less than fifteen dollars an hour. We have four job classifications that make less than fifteen dollars an hour. That is our sports manager. This is one employee who works in our athletic department. He is a manager for the football, wrestling, and baseball teams. He works from August through May for those three seasons, and he works roughly three hours a day during the week for us. Now, we have substitute food service staff who earn currently thirteen dollars and twelve cents an hour. We have four employees in that job classification. We have cafe, cafeteria trainees who make fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents an hour. There are four employees in, in that group. And then the rest of our employee classifications are earning fifteen dollars or greater. The food service classifications, we're going to be addressing those when we meet with our food service friends for their meat and discuss agreement that comes up on July first of this year. Dr. Scott, Ms. Hogan, and myself have a plan to, to make some changes to that agreement and to raise the hourly rates for, for some, for these job classifications. So they will be raised. Questions on that topic? Hope that answers your question, excuse it. Next item up, again, I was asked during the work session on the fifteenth, I'm sorry, on, on March tenth, about the cost, the difference between fifteen dollars an hour for our paraprofessionals and twelve dollars an hour. Currently, they were earning at that time twelve dollars an hour. We were asking the board to approve, which you have done so back on March twenty-fourth, to raise the rate to fifteen dollars an hour. I was asked to provide three months of data, and I've asked our subprovider, Kelly Educational Staffing, to provide that information. And you can see from the chart that you received over the weekend, and again, here on the screen, what the difference is between twelve dollars an hour and fifteen dollars an hour. We have aides who work different hours a day depending on who they're in for. As you can see from the December chart, just to run through the numbers real quick, it's the three-and-a-half-hour day position. We filled it seven times in the month of December. We have a need for three-and-a-quarter hours. We did not fill that one. We have needs of four hours. It was filled twenty-one times. At four-and-a-half hours, we filled it twenty-two times. And then for a full-time, a seven-and-a-half-hour day, we filled it seventeen times or sixty-seven times being filled. And you can see at the various costs of twelve dollars an hour, what that costs for the month, four thousand twenty dollars, that's what we were billed. If we were paying fifteen dollars at that time, it would have been five thousand twenty-five dollars. So you can see that repeats itself for the month of January and February. What you don't see from these numbers is if it was fifteen dollars all along, would we have been able to fill it more so? Because these are just the fill rates, it's not showing you what the absence rates were and what we did not fill. We don't typically fill very well with our age rates. That's probably around fifty percent of the time we fill them when they're open. Our teachers are much higher thankfully, but the age rates are, are low. This is what it's going to cost. And if you take the three months together, and you would have paid them at fifteen dollars an hour, it would have been one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars more at fifteen dollars an hour for the, for, for the positions that were filled. Again, I hope I answered the board's questions with that information. All right, Board Policy three, three, zero, zero. It's the overtime policy. During our last presidential administration, the IRS and the Department of Labor changed some of the overtime rules, regulations. And we are a little slow, I'll admit, to getting to this because those rules and regulations went into effect back in two thousand seventeen. So we needed to update this particular policy, and this is the first read for those, for those changes. And you can see the changes there in green versus to what we're taking out in, in red. And by doing that, that'll bring us into compliance with federal law, Department of Labor law for, for overtime. So that is coming up for first read on April twenty eighth. Next is Board Policy eight, ten, point one. And this is a revision to our current policy. Back in two thousand twenty, the state of Pennsylvania passed a law called Act thirty, one thirty-one of two thousand twenty. And this impacts our drivers who hold CDL licenses and also impacts our non-CDL drivers in the district. So of course, our CDL drivers are, are bus drivers, or non-CDL drivers are our maintenance workers who are driving district vehicles throughout the district during the day. So the policy eight, ten, point one requires minor changes to reflect the new law of Act one thirty-one. So you can see those changes in green, some additional changes in red. Again, all this stuff that was being changed is dictated by the, the new law that the state put into effect about two years ago now. So do you have any question on changes proposed for Policy eight, ten, point one? Okay, hearing none, this is good. We're going to move into a new policy as soon as Dr. Scott gets down there. The new policy is eight, ten, point three. This policy we do not have currently in the district. It comes recommended from PSBA. Of course, PSBA helps us write many of our policies, as you're well aware, I hope. This is a new policy, and this policy deals with our non-CDL drivers. And this is something that's probably been glaringly missed, missing in this district for a long time now. PSBA is recommending that we put this policy in place. This policy does reflect the changes in Act one thirty-one of two thousand twenty. So we're asking the board to take this to first read on April twenty-eighth and pass it in, in May. So we can also have this policy for our non-CDL drivers. Shelley, these policies and the one that Dr. D. Marino Lynn is referring to all require seventy-two hours notice. It's, it's a state law. I mean, we can certainly require our policies to be less than that. But state law says it's seventy-two hours for this policy as well as the other policies that we, that we have referencing this time and stuff. So anyone, anytime a employee is arrested for a crime, they have seventy-two hours to notify us in writing. That's one of our policies. I don't know which one is off the top of my head. I can research that one, but this also reflects state law. That's why the state is trying to be consistent in the seventy-two hour timeline.
I mean, even to put them on the sideline, you know, in the time that there's investigation or whatever, but to have them, you know, pop back into it the next day. I mean, that just seems unnecessary.
That, that is correct. But again, the seventy-two hours is driven from other state, other state laws and other policies that we have in place. I mean, we can certainly talk to Mr. Kelly and see if we want to revise not only this policy to reflect a lesser amount of time, but we would have to do other policies as well. Yes, it is. We can certainly do that for both of these policies and other policies that are impacted by it, certainly. All right, so there are two policies. We'll get that straightened out, get some information back to the board quickly. Our, our last item on the agenda is a real quick comment on the communication position during the budget meeting on March fifteenth. I was asked by the board to provide salary and benefit costs associated with a communications position. I was asked to provide that based on a twelve-month administrative salary. I sent an email to the board members, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, about that information. Roughly the cost for a full-time administrative twelve-month position to provide communication services to the district is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. I, I did put together a job description with some input from Beth Trapani, who we utilize for communication services over the last five or six years or so. So I, I did have some input from someone who does the job for many, many schools throughout the Commonwealth. So I hoping the board was satisfied with the answer that I was providing to them. Salary and benefits. I was salary and benefits. Will do, understood. And that concludes my my report tonight, Teresa. Thank you. I guess any questions from the board, the the public? Fantastic. Thank you.
All right, so we're moving towards the business of the board. We did uh the DCC trustee appointments. Uh, we did it a little earlier. Um, so Hillary wants to talk about uh communications and community engagement.
Yeah, I mean, you can just start. It's something that I know Kelly's not here, but yeah.
We'll see if I can handle it.
Yeah.
So uh, in our conversations when we discussed committees and committee structure, et cetera, um, uh, we had discussed initially communications and community engagement being an ad hoc committee. Kelly and I were the two people who that kind of rose to the top of our list. We got together, we started putting this kind of ad hoc structure together. You'll see that in front of you. Um, just a a basic outline, kind of where we thought, uh, you know, we should go with this. Um, discussing this as an ad hoc was delayed for a number of reasons. And in that delay, we kept talking and it occurred to us with the cost that Mr. Hatberg just shared for a communications director to have somebody act as our communications director. Perhaps bringing this back as a a committee of the whole uh with a um with a committee chair could satisfy some of the needs that we have and could do some of the work that or begin some of the work that we see listed here. So when, for example, we would like to put out a board communication of some kind, we can go to our the committee chair, it can use with committee chair. That committee chair could work with the Donovan group in in arranging what whatever the board's needs are. Um, so I'm just putting it out there. Um, I actually don't know if I have officially asked something or.
Well, I mean, I think it's it we need to discuss it, right? Because we've talked about it as being the ad hoc. And now the a whole entire committee is a big deal. And uh, we need to discuss parameters and, you know, what it would or would not do or whether we even need a committee. So it's sort of open for people to talk about it.
Time recollection, this was something that initially came up in the the sprints that we did around um how we might want to restructure. And this does make a lot of sense to me. I agree, uh, initially thinking about it as an ad hoc, um, so that a few people could really delve into it seemed to make sense. But in in hearing more about where Hillary and Kelly had been thinking this through, because it's new to us, because it's a new area of exploration, it does seem to make sense that we should approach this committee of the whole with one person kind of leading that. Um, I I'm unsure if we can or if we should consider making this a new standing committee and policy 005, or if we would just proceed in a more informal way, at least to start with and see where it goes. So I don't know, Hillary, if you guys just have that at all.
So we didn't, thank you for that, Susan. Um, we didn't, I I think that we had initially assumed it would be part of our policy and would be an official part of our committee structure. Uh, one thing that I didn't mention before is the reason that we started thinking more like this is because it it will be an ongoing need. It's communications, as you know, was actually part of the committee structure before, not handled in quite the same, not for the same reasons that now, you know, might might feel necessary. Um, but but this will be ongoing, even if it's frequent. It is, you know, part of what what the board may need to do. And I don't know if we've ever had a community engagement piece specifically for the board. And there there is some potential board work to be done around around that area as well. Your question was, yes, we had only seen it as part of the actual policy.
Usually it's always on, I never turn it off. Um, are you thinking that it's going to be a committee of the whole and you're just going to have one person who is funneling that? Like, is the point person for communication?
Yeah. So the point person would be uh, the point person would be for this communications and community engagement would would be the chair of that committee. And yeah, I see them more as the funneling person, whether they have to work with you on something if if there's a communication that we have that needs your expertise, but they would also be able to work with with Donovan. Um, just sticking to communications piece for later.
And what are they communicating? So is this a communication from the board, like the board highlights?
Yes.
And it, but it could be something else as well, like the budget.
Right, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, like I think I wrote a note to myself, somebody had a question. Jackie and I had a two second, like, oh, that's something we we should, you know, would think about sharing. We might, the the, somebody might bring that up to the chair. The chair might go to you and say, hey, do you see any pitfalls for doing this? No, okay, let's bring it to the Donovan group and then you're out of it. You're done.
I didn't, I didn't think we're on that.
Yeah.
Um, I think, you know, for example, like when we did the whole charter school communication, which ended up on my lap, which is really kind of the work of the board, I think.
Yes.
Um, that would be helpful. Um, and then the board would work directly with Donovan to do that.
Yes.
I just don't see, I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know me, I always try to operationalize things. So it's it's the next work session. There may or may not be something on that work session. Or is the board going to sort of say we have a communication agenda item we want to discuss?
Yeah, I mean, I I would hope so. I it, that's the way it would work, yes, as a committee.
You know, I kind of feel the way Susan Lane, this idea that I'm I'm not set with making it a a full committee like we have now. Uh, because this will be different and I I feel like we need to set out the parameters in terms of what, when are we sending out communication, why? And because we know the district is already doing some stuff. So I I think it needs some guardrails. And that's why I initially thought uh ad hoc would work because you're figuring out, what are we doing, right? Because this is new and it's not really attached to an administrator like the other committees.
Um, that's only by default of the fact that we don't have a communications professional.
Because we can't afford it.
Right.
But but that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't want it to be sort of too open-ended, right? And I want, I would like to see, okay, the, this is A, B, C, and D in terms of what issues and how, you know what I mean? And I just, I just really need that fleshed out.
So I agree with you. Uh, it can't be willy-nilly. We do have to have some parameters in place. However, it it is ongoing work. It it's always going to be there. There will, there will be need for the board to make statements. We do right now, the Donovan puts out um the board uh report. We should have a chair that that they can work with to do that and somebody who also will read that thoroughly and maybe ask some questions about it and just iron out those small pieces that need to be ironed out. So I 100% agree with you and see your concerns, but to me, it's never not going to be a reasonable part of our actual uh committee structure.
I guess one of my questions is, does it need to be a committee or could it be a communications slash community engagement liaison that is from the board that, I mean, we don't have a communication to contract that to Donovan and that that's kind of their administrative contact. And and I, you know, tonight we talked about a couple of things. Eleanor, you guys did an incredible job on all the budget stuff, like how much comes from where and where you're from, isn't it? And yet we need to still keep reading that over and over and over again. And how do we get that out there? Because that, I think that's part of the community engagement you're talking about. And then, you know, talking about S E and S E L and how much work you guys are doing. You guys are doing the work, but sometimes it's our job to promote what the administration or the entire district is doing.
I think the other thing that happens when you have it as committee of the whole, and this isn't a hole that I'm willing to die in, but the other part of what happens is that you have consistent reporting, right? Because we have these committees, we get reports from the administration. We should have a little bit more of an awareness that Donovan is staying on schedule with things that we've asked them to do. They've been our communications people for two years now. And we've often asked questions about whether or not they're hitting the goals that that they set out or they're doing the things that they even suggested. We're not, I don't think, we're not using them to the best of their ability. And it's that idea that maybe changed my opinion, again, with Mr. Hatberg's bottom line crisis of the communications person. Um, but but this uh structure would allow us to maybe use Donovan to their fullest.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, it doesn't necessarily need to be a committee because we are a committee of the whole already. So I'm a liaison for DCCCU, for DCIU, and we bring things to the board all the time.
Yeah.
And so that's why I was saying maybe it would be easier is to have a communications liaison and who works with Donovan.
I I think too, just like we, we're going to do the calendar in August, um, that maybe we ought to think in August about the big communication pieces. Like, I feel like there should be a really good communication about school budgets because it's hard for the community to understand school budgets. And you heard it tonight, you know, they don't really understand the difference between the operation and the capital budgets and Act One. And and so um, there are districts that have a really good budget communication piece. And I would like to, love to see that written. So maybe when we do the calendar for the big anchors, um, that maybe we ought to be doing that same thing around what are the communication initiatives for the year.
I I would also offer that if we had.
No, that just made me really nervous. That just sounds like, just made me really exhausted, Jackie.
If we can zero in on a communications liaison or chair or whatever earlier, they could start working with Donovan to get their assessment about what types of communications might be helpful. So we're not sitting there in August trying to come up with things. They have a few months to do that. I just, I'd like to be something that's, whatever we call it. And so initially I'm thinking, well, it should be a committee so that it rises, bubbles to the top and becomes important. Because I think that these are, both pieces are important, the communications and community engagement. And we as a board need to find a way to to put more focus on it. And it feels like the committee designation is how it's going to get focused. I'm concerned that if it stays in the sort of ad hoc liaison format, it will slide to the bottom and won't get the attention it deserves.
I mean, I think it would be the calendar. You know, the calendar to me focuses the the planning, so it doesn't kind of just get by the wayside. Because even the communication about like the RTM reporter, we know when that comes out and maybe that gets put on the calendar. And the liaison works with Donovan around that reporter, because right now that's Alan Al, right? It's just, it's just another, you know, um, thing to dedicate time to where I think the the ordinary communication liaison could be working with Donovan. I do like the, I like the idea of the liaison. It makes sense when we were defining what a liaison is and an ad hoc, it seems to work. And it seems to, it seems like a start. Maybe that's not the end of it, but it seems like a good start because I'm still, I don't, I don't, I need the rails. I need some, you know.
But why wouldn't having the, I'm sorry to jump on, why wouldn't having the communications person in place, uh, the communications um chair in place, wouldn't it be their responsibility to start to work to put that together?
Um, yeah, but I'm just saying, when you're you're starting something new, you know, you're growing it from the ground up. And the committee, that that seems like the end of it. And but I don't think we've done all the middle work or the groundwork to figure out what this is going to be.
Yeah.
So that's why I said it sounds like a a good start. It may, for people who are a little leery of this, it may, and as me, um, it may be a way to begin to grow and say, okay, I can envision it and we see where it's going. I'm just, I mean, people are bombarded with messages, with information. Um, I'm sure they would love to read our stuff, but, you know, it, I just, I just worry in in terms of how much is being put out there and is it relevant? Is it just reactionary? All of that. I mean, that's why I just say it's a way to grow it. That's, that's just how I see it instead of throwing a committee together, you know, with a chair. And I'm I'm not sure we're all on the same page about what this is going to do or what it's going to look like yet.
Maybe if we commit to having this agenda item every work session, this business of the board, if we commit to having this as part of our agenda, then it at least gives a place for this conversation to land. Because that's also part of the problem is with this structure and with sunshine laws, we can't discuss things unless we're in this format. And without this business of the board agenda item, there's no, there's no room to discuss within our current framework of committees. So if we can commit to this and then having that be an item when we need it, I would be satisfied with the liaison position.
Maybe we can try, Teresa, your point, have a liaison and then make a decision at the next, the annual restructuring of the board in the beginning of December. And we can make a decision then that it becomes, stays a liaison or becomes a committee. But I do think we need to get on it. I like your schedule too, right? So we did the whole budget meeting, what was it, in the middle of March? We did a whole session devoted to nothing but the budget. And now that I think back, I'm like, boy, that would have been great to give a lot of the information upfront. 20% of our funding comes from the state, less than one from the federal government. This portion of our budget is contracted. We write 47 than the nation, write your congresspeople now. Um, and, you know, to really kind of set the stage, because we didn't, you know, the the budget is so detailed in that, in that meeting that we go through, that setting the stage every single year when we talk about it is a really good thing. Then same thing with whether we're talking, you know, you know, there's, there's a million things, school topics, capacity, you know? We hear over and over at meetings that there's a really big misunderstanding about what our capacity increases are for the future. And I went back and I read those charts and I mentioned to you, Jackie, and like, they all go green. Well, I think they all go green because it's implying there's a new school there. And so therefore, they're no longer in the red zone anymore. But if there's no school there, then it would be dark red. So maybe, you know, there's like, as we evolve and we keep hearing the same topics come up over and over again, that means there's a topic for consideration for communications liaison and Donovan toward card.
I I know that um several different communications issues have bubbled up here in the last few months. And Eleanor, I think that you in a string of emails I'm thinking of suggested that maybe we need a retreat, a a special work session to talk through not just how we want to structure a committee or liaison and what those guardrails would be, but other issues that have come up around communications. Is that something that maybe we want to try to get in before the end of the year?
Can I make a recommendation? Uh, this is where we're talking about a simple public issues plan. You've done them a dozen times probably. So if we, and and the rest of the stuff is crisis management. We don't really have either of those in place right now. We don't need to have a named committee or name that happens. We need two people who are interested in doing it. You and Shelley, or Kelly, or Shelley, I'm sorry, Kelly, are all your instruments. So what I would like to see, what I would have is eight, nine, 10 people talk about these things, is put together a agenda. It's kind of like the calendar you're talking about. We have 10 things that happen in the whole school year. We know that's part of the PR plan. Let's put this out to the rest of the bands, we'll have the best. That can be something the rest of the people can bounce off of. Instead of having circular conversations that works on a dozen, and we'll have a document that says, here's 12 months of press release for the bottom part, or whatever. And crisis management is dealt with in a different way. And uh, you know, it won't add much work, which everything I'm hearing does add a lot of work.
I was really hoping it wouldn't add a lot of work. I was hoping it would minimize the work to just have the point person.
And then work with Donovan.
Yeah, I I think that that makes a lot of sense to have a liaison or two people as we're ramping up. Because we have to create a structure, as Teresa said, I think we need to understand what that structure looks like. But then I also really like the idea of making sure that we have a a place to talk about this. Because in my short time on the board, all we do is, you know, try to have some kind of exchange after a public meeting where people bring up all kinds of issues that we haven't thought through. I I think it's really important, not only for us to have a regular set of communications that go out on a predictable schedule and to have crisis management structures and mechanisms, but also we as a board need to internalize the messages that we're sending out. I mean, it's not just about getting messages out. It's about, and of course, we're not all going to be on the same page about any issue. But there are there are plenty of things that we all agree on in basic outline where we don't have the talking points for to respond to community concerns about those issues. And I think that's part of what having a community strategy means just for us as a functioning board, as and as representatives of the community and as ambassadors to the community.
And whoever that person is should be part of whatever the whole crisis management thing is. You know, the recent PSBA training video that they sent out, one of the things was, you know, making sure that there are board members engaged in crisis management. Or there's go-to reliable group, a small, small team, one, two, three, whatever it is, that that's a part of that. And whoever is in communications would be the ideal person to be that person.
I mean, it it sounds like maybe we need to have a a further discussion in the the retreat. I guess in May or June or something, possibly. But because I'm concerned this crisis management, I I don't think that's us. I don't, you know, so I don't want to deal with that. That's Eleanor.
Well, a a crisis management professional, hopefully.
Well, you know what I'm saying. It it's all going to land on her. So we don't need, that's why I said we need to have the guardrails to figure out where we're going with this. And maybe having a larger discussion.
And we were we were supposed to in our other conversations that retreat got pushed. So I mean, if that that seems logical, then we would continue it.
All right. So we can look into doing that. Maybe June, early June. I got stuff to do. Late May. And then it's Memorial Day weekend. We'll see. Yeah, we'll see.
I had offered to put out like a doodle board to get that started. Do you want me to follow up with that or is there a better way to find things?
Just do it and we'll see what the the interests are. Yeah. Early June or, you know, some mid-May. But see, remember what Eleanor said. It's like they're doing what was asked of them. So if.
We just got that score.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. I guess we're done? All right. Good night. Thank you. Thank you.